Good evening and welcome. This is a public hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Evanston. The zoning ordinance directs this body to hear applications for major variations, special uses, and appeals from decisions of the zoning administrator. Depending on the type of matter, this board will make either a final determination or send its recommendation to city council. Melissa, will you call role, please?
Lisa Deacon?
Here.
Mary McCauley?
Present.
Scott Gingold?
Mary Beth Burns?
Here.
Violette Collin?
Present.
Myrna Aravalo?
And Kirill Maranchev?
Here.
With five members present tonight, we have a quorum. Also present tonight are zoning planner Melissa Klotz and planning and zoning administrator Scott Mangum. Nobody from legal is here. This is a formal meeting, and there are rules that govern our proceedings. Most importantly, only one person speaks at a time, so all testimony may be accurately recorded. Anyone who wishes to address the board regarding any matter on the agenda will have the opportunity to do so at the appropriate time. Our procedure is to hear from staff on the documents on file, and then receive testimony and other evidence from the applicant or appellant. Next, persons who wish to make a statement regarding the matter may do so at that time. Any person with a legal interest in property located within 500 feet of the subject property may present evidence, reasonably question witnesses, or seek a continuance of the hearing. When all supporting and opposing testimony and statements have been heard, the applicant or appellant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal or a closing statement. Then the board will close the record and begin deliberations. All testimony will be under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence, please limit your testimony or statement to your personal knowledge. When you address the board, please state your name and address and sign in on the provided sheet. Our meetings are audio and video recorded. Please make sure that you are at a microphone when asking questions or making statements so that you can be properly recorded. All proceedings are subject to broadcast at a later date. Any matter not concluded at tonight's hearing will be continued to our next regularly scheduled meeting. There are four items on the agenda this evening. There's 2901 Central. Are you here? 1822 Lyons? Hopefully they'll show up. 750 Chicago Avenue?
Here.
You guys are here. And 2112 Ewing. Okay. So everybody but Lyons is here, so we'll wait and see when they, if and when they show up. All right. The first agenda on our, the first item on our agenda are the meeting minutes from the last meeting. Has everybody had a chance to review those?
Yes.
Are there any modifications?
No.
All right. Can I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes, May 15, 2018.
Second? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I will note that I did not vote since I was not at that meeting. All right. For everyone who's going to plan on speaking at tonight's meeting, can I get you to raise your right hand? And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings? Fantastic. We will move on to 2901 Central Street, and Melissa will read that into the record, please. Oh, Scott, sorry. Gosh, you guys need to put your names next to us.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, members of the public. The request on this item is for a special use permit to operate a Type 2 restaurant. Got to be crepes within the B1A business district and also within the Central Street overlay district. On this matter, the zoning board is a recommending body to the city council, who's a determining body. Staff and design and project review committee have reviewed the request and are recommending approval of this special use for the Type 2 restaurants. It does appear to meet all standards, does not require any zoning variations. So with that, it's a summary of the staff report, and then additionally, attachments are included, including the application and various pieces of information submitted by the applicant. Concludes a summary of the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. If you'd like to come up and tell us your name and address, and tell us about your project, please.
My name is Ryan Jones. My home address or?
Business address is fine.
Sure. 2901 Central Street, Evanston, Illinois.
Okay.
And my name is Katia Jones, 2901 Central Street.
Thank you. Could you tell us a little bit about your project, please?
Sure. We're very excited, after eight years in business this Thursday, to open our first restaurant.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. So yeah, Katia and I, we met making crepes 13 years ago, August 2005. And when the place closed down, we started up on our front porch eight years ago this Thursday, and just made for neighbors. So we're very excited to find a spot that's a nice neighborhood area. When we first moved to Evanston in 2010, it was over on Central Street by the stadium. So it's nice to be having our first business up on the same street. If you've seen us at the farmer's market, what we're looking forward to hear is continue to make crepes at order, sourcing from the different farmers and family producers here in the area, or, you know, those we find at the markets around town. And in this case, having outside of the market where we're just a picnic table, having a place for people to sit and join and relax and enjoy the crepes and nice conversation or celebrations. So we're very excited, and it's our first venture like this, and so we're very excited and looking forward to continue this adventure.
We're going to go through a bunch of, a bunch of questions that you've answered, but we need to ask them to get them into the record.
Sure.
So the first is, how many employees do you have?
Right now, maybe 12.
You have 12 employees?
Maybe a few less.
Like how?
Some are just seasonal.
Okay. Okay. And where, what's the plan for parking for them?
For parking right now?
Yeah.
There's just a few spaces we have.
How many, how many is a few?
We have four spaces.
Okay.
Our cargo van is one, or the business truck is one, so there's just three other spaces available.
Okay.
For each shift over there, it's just between, you know, right now as we're doing, just for the markets, just between one and three people. But once we open those doors up on the busier shift, maybe no more than six people working. So the plan was either public transportation, the one lady, she comes down the metro and walks over, we pick her up. Besides that, would just be street parking, but not the metered spaces.
Okay. And deliveries? I saw some, some discussion in the application about deliveries. If you can go through that quickly?
Sure. Just usually the family farmers. Edward Don or Natural Direct would be the two, the larger companies. Edward Don has a larger box truck. Natural Direct's a little bit smaller. But besides that, it's just the smaller box trucks for the different farmers. CND Family Farms, Jake's Country Meats, and all the rest. It's usually just smaller vehicles.
And what are the hours of delivery? When are those planned?
On when they come? Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays.
And during business hours, after business hours, or at 4:00 in the morning?
During business hours, usually after 7:00 would be the earliest, but typically between mid to late morning.
Okay.
Edward Don usually early afternoon. The only early morning thing was the Mahoney for the grease trap, but we just talked to them because of the neighbors right there?
Right.
About coming at the end of their shifts.
Okay.
They said they start at 1:00 in the morning, but they don't finish till, I believe, late morning. So we just requested they to come no earlier than 8:00.
Okay. And what hour, what hours of operation are you looking for?
We're looking to begin with breakfast and lunch Wednesday through Sunday, and with Fridays and Saturdays for dinner as well.
You do anticipate increasing your hours per demand, though, correct?
Yes, definitely. Per demand and, you know, developing more crepe makers.
Sure.
Being seasonal, we've always had a great ability to develop great crepe makers. But, you know, for folks, supporting families?
Right.
To not have worked for them for six months?
Right.
Was challenging, although we made it for a few years, but we're hoping with this time around to keep and retain and expand hours with having better staff.
Yeah, I'm asking that because typically the board will place restrictive hours of operation, and so you probably want to comprehend your plans for future growth.
Sure.
And, you know, probably in accord with the other restaurants in the area and their hours of operation.
I know we enjoy, we can go to Hardigan so late. It works out really well.
I know you say you normally have 12 employees. Do you have that 12, is that seasonal amount, or do you have that 12 all year round?
No, that's just seasonal.
So normally, how many employees do you normally have?
Well, in the wintertime, zero. You know, we don't really, it's just ourselves and my aunt's been helping me out and another father in the area. So pretty much, in the off-season, it's been just flexible.
Is that because you were only in the markets? I know you used to be on Simpson.
Yep.
At that point, you had how many?
On Simpson Street, was probably 15 or 16 we had going.
On full-time basis?
No, full-time was only just a handful.
A handful, like three or four normally would be on a shift?
Yeah, three or four in a shift.
Okay. I just wanted, thank you.
But then at the markets, because we would scatter, you know, some folks would just meet us at the market, but like three to four would come in the morning at the restaurant, or that space on Simpson, then come back at the end of the day and finish.
The reason why I ask is because there's a lot of concern with employees parking in the community, and I know you don't probably have that many employees year-round. I just wanted to put that on the record.
Thank you so much.
I noted in the record that there's some discussion of placing a mural on the east side of the building. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, we're just utilizing that space there just to communicate to people that we got good food, and we'd be happy to feed their hunger.
So is that more reflective of business signage or public art? I'm just trying to understand.
I would hope public art.
Okay.
With a business use.
And you guys have read the sustainability practices for Type 2 restaurants and agree to all of those components, which include the litter collection plan, litter pickup plan, and recycling and all that good stuff?
Yes.
Okay. Are you planning to do anything to the outside of the building?
Just in the front, with having the seating in the front there, in the...
Are you replacing awnings or changing windows or doing any of that?
Oh, no. Just so we'll be putting the same, utilizing the same awning frame?
Okay.
To put an awning there.
So there'll be new awnings on the existing frames?
Yes.
Okay. Are you painting by any chance?
Not outside.
All right.
Should've stayed pink, but it didn't.
Say it again?
I said, "We wish that it would've stayed pink, but that's okay."
You liked it pink?
Yeah.
I think you might've been the only one. Any other questions from the board?
Do you intend to put seats outside on the sidewalk?
There's that little, what, inlet? I'm stumbling for the word, but it recesses in.
Yeah, it's a recess.
And so along the windows there, we'd like to do like a bench, one of those like the cinder blocks with the wood beams between the holes for like some simple seating there.
So I believe the property line is at the outmost pillar over there. Is that correct?
It does look like there's a bit of a recess from the sidewalk and the property line to where the building is.
So there are no regulatory problems with putting some seats over there?
Not with putting the benches there, yeah. The benches should meet?
Should be fine?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a seat. Is there anybody who has any, from the public, who has any comments on this? Anybody who'd like to speak on this one? If you'd like to come up, we're more than happy to hear you. All right. Then if there's nobody who has any comments, is there anything you'd like to say in summation?
Look forward to feed you.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. We're going to close the record, and comments from staff, from the board?
I think this is an example of a business that's been operating in our community for many years, at the markets that people have enjoyed. You know, I myself have enjoyed your gluten-free crepes. I hope that you continue to carry those in your new bricks and mortar location. This is, you know, a location that Roses has moved out of, I don't know, over two years ago, and so the space has sat vacant, so this is an opportunity to fill this space, activate the space, you know, bring more people to the corridor. So I think it's a, I think it's a good proposal.
I agree that we're thrilled to have you maintain your business in Evanston.
I enjoy you guys at the market, and I like that it's a small business. I think it'll fit in well with the rest of the businesses on Central Street, and I welcome you.
I will support you guys. I know the business, and I know you're from Simpson, so it's good to, it's good to have you, and it's good to have you on Central.
Excellent. I think the only thing that we, besides going through the standards, is that the hours of operations. So Scott had just given me a quick download on what's on the block, on that street. So Starbucks opens at 6:00, Backlot Coffee opens at 6:30, Kurtz opens at 7:00, and the Old Neighborhood Grill is open till 11:00 p.m., and Hardigans is open till 9:00 p.m. So are we thinking like 6:00 to 10:00 for hours? Does that seem reasonable to everybody?
I was thinking actually...
Yep.
I was thinking actually 7:00 to 10:00, but if they'd like to, I mean, if you want to be comprehensive for?
Breakfast.
The commuters on their way to the train, I think that 6:00 to 10:00 is probably a good parameter.
That seems to work for everybody?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then you won't be out of whack with the rest of the neighborhood. All right. So let's go through the nine standards for special uses. Number one, it is one of the special uses specifically listed in the zoning ordinance. It is, and there are no further restrictions in the, in the Central Street overlay district. Number two, it's in keeping with the purposes and policies of the adopted comprehensive general plan and the zoning ordinance as amended from time to time. Certainly, one of the goals is to promote the growth and redevelopment and strengthen the economic base of Evanston, and by having a local owner provide more jobs and get more people to the street, that certainly is in service of that goal. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number three, it will not cause a negative cumulative effect when its effect is considered in conjunction with the cumulative effect of various special uses of all types on the immediate neighborhood and the effect of the proposed type of special use upon the city as a whole. There certainly aren't very many special uses in that particular part of town, so I don't think that this causes any sort of negative cumulative effect. So I think that that standard certainly has been met. Number four, it does not interfere with or diminish the value of the property in the neighborhood. To the contrary, vacant land, vacant storefronts certainly detract and diminish the value of property. So by filling one of those vacant storefronts, I think we're definitely increasing the value of the property and increasing the viability of that part of Central Street. So I think that that standard has certainly been met. Number five, it can be adequately served by public facilities and services. It is on a, on a bus route. It is also a long walk, but a walk nonetheless, from the train station, and there's certainly a loyal following of people who walk to things on Central Street. So I think that that certainly will be adequately served by public, public facilities. So I think that that standard has been met. Number six, it does not cause undue traffic congestion. But there's been a restaurant in that location before, and there were no problems related to that particular use of the building. Also, as I just mentioned about the, the walkability of it from the neighborhood, so I think that, that, that will most likely be the way that most people will get there. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number seven, it preserves significant historical and architectural resources. Aside from reusing an existing building that's been vacant, there's nothing significantly historical or architectural about that building, but certainly using a building that's existing is a benefit. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number eight, it preserves significant natural and environmental features. I don't think that standard applies. And number nine, it complies with all of the applicable regulations of the district in which it's located, and all, everything else you'll be required to, to meet. So that standard will certainly be met. So with that, can I have a motion with hours and employee parking, litter, all that good stuff?
I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Great.
In the matter of 2901 Central Street, 18Z MJV-0037, I move that we make a positive recommendation to city council with the following conditions: such that the business hours are maintained to extend no further than 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., that employee, employees are not allowed to park at on-street metered parking spaces, and that the business be operated in keeping with the sustainability plan according to the City of Evanston.
Second.
Hey, hang on. Friendly amendment, and is in keeping with all the?
Testimony.
Documents and testimony on file.
Thank you.
Now, second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And with that, you go to city council with a recommendation for approval. Good luck with your project. Thank you. All right. Moving on to 1822 Lyons. Have you guys, are you guys here? Going once, going twice, moving on to 750 Chicago Avenue? You guys don't have to stay for the rest of everything. Feel free to leave. This isn't that scintillating. Okay. Melissa, will you read us them into the record, please?
Thomas Alman, architect, applies for major zoning relief to establish an outdoor seating area at Firehouse Grill in the C1A Commercial Mixed Use District. The applicant requests to eliminate two ADA parking spaces for a total of zero parking spaces where 28 parking spaces were originally required and two parking spaces currently exist, zoning code section 61635, Table 16B. A three-foot-tall wood fence, continuous planter box, that is one foot behind the front building facade of Chicago Avenue, where fencing must be at least three feet behind the front building facade, zoning code section 6467F2E. And an eight-foot-tall wood fence with a zero-foot street-side yard setback on Madison Street, where the maximum allowed fence height is six feet, and a two-foot street-side yard setback is required, zoning code section 6467F. The Zoning Board of Appeals makes a recommendation to city council, the determining body for this case. Following the recommendation of the DAPR committee, the applicant did submit a revised site plan with a total of one onsite ADA parking space, and that eliminates the ADA drop-off zone but maintains the current delivery truck zone that is there. Documents included as part of the record include: Variation application submitted May 17, 2018. Plaid of survey, site plans and elevations, letters of concern, image of property, aerial view of property, zoning map of property, DAPR draft meeting minutes excerpt of May 30, 2018, and one additional letter of opposition that was handed out at the beginning of the meeting.
All right. If you guys would give us your name and business address, and then tell us a little bit about your project, please.
Sure. My name is Pat Fowler. The business address is 750 Chicago Avenue, where the Firehouse Grill is located. I'm excited to be here in Evanston. I'm a longtime Evanston resident. I just recently purchased the Firehouse Grill last year, and excited to be here in Evanston and get back to a community that I've been a part of for a long time. We're here tonight seeking variation to extend the patio that already exists at the Firehouse Grill, and along with me, I have Thomas.
Hi, Thomas Alman, Studio Tallow Architecture. The business address is 1234 Sherman Avenue.
Thank you. So have, is, we've heard the presentation. Can I ask a question? We have a letter here objecting to the proposed eight-foot-tall wooden fence with zero setback along Madison Street. The, the concern that the neighbor from 7-Eleven Madison raises is that the eight-foot-tall fence may obscure traffic turning onto Madison from Chicago Avenue, particularly since there is the fire station right there at Custer and Madison Street. Any reason that fence could not be lowered a little bit or moved in a little bit? I mean, I do understand the concern with that. I'm thrilled that the garbage there is going to be contained, because I'm really very familiar with that corner. I actually live on Madison Street, patron of Firehouse Grill for a long time. But, but, you know, it's great that the refuse will be contained, but I do understand the concern for an eight-foot-tall fence there. I wonder if you could speak to that?
Sure. So, you know, as you know, part of the DAPR review, there's somebody from the Tristan, from the fire department's there, and there were no concerns from the people that would be the most concerned. So I think technically, I think we feel comfortable with it, and I think part of the reason it's, it is a unique situation, because it's, it's the embankment there, and I think the idea is to obscure as much of the embankment, which isn't the most attractive part of the location.
To that point, I think that in addition to sort of the, the fire and safety concern with the eight-foot fence, was the idea that it would create sort of a wall for the pedestrian experience. I guess in part, I'd like to better understand why that tall of a, of a fence is needed. I understand, I hear what you're saying about the embankment, but in order to enclose the patio, could that be lowered? And then a question to staff is, how is this in keeping with other similar structures across the city for other patio-type uses?
Well, I mean, the fence could be built any height. I think it, like, I would go back to my point about it being a little bit unique, that it's not, I think the six-foot fence, there's a security concerns when there are neighbors and things like that, but the neighbor in this case is the embankment, and so we're just obscuring more of something that's not particularly attractive.
I have a question about your seating. How, how large is your seating right now? How many does your restaurant hold? With the patio, currently?
So inside on the first floor, it holds 100, and the patio holds currently 36.
And then your expansion will allow to expand to what number?
72.
72 on the patio alone?
Correct.
Oh, okay. And plus the 100 inside?
Yeah, and then there's also the second floor space as well. That's used primarily for?
Parties or?
Yeah, so really depends for seating, as far as seating goes.
Okay. That's significant. Thank you.
May I pose my question to staff, or should I hold that for when we close the record?
No, go ahead.
So the question was, how are, how are other patios are treated across the city in terms of the fence height in regards to this eight-foot fence?
Could we qualify that to restaurants that back up to the metro?
Well, I'm looking at your site plan, and, you know, I was trying to picture it, and, you know, I've been to your site, I'm familiar with the corridor, and while, so just south of there is, is the parking lot, and then I understand where you're situated against the embankment, but from a pedestrian experience along Chicago Avenue, there is still going to be a significant wall there.
The Chicago Avenue side is?
Yeah, sure.
The Chicago Avenue side is three feet.
I understand.
Hang on, hang on, just a second. We need to find you the microphone, because we can't hear you.
One is up there.
The microphone's up there, so if you can just be sure to turn that on.
Does it have a neat little laser, too?
There may be one up there.
No, that's okay. I can, the, I just, I want to make sure that we're talking about the same thing spatially. So Chicago Avenue, oh, that's awesome. Thank you. Can you see the little green down there? So this is Chicago Avenue. There's landscaping, sidewalk, the planters, and the patio. So this is quite a ways back from the street.
Right. But it's, it's the eight-foot fence along Madison Street, so it is right at the sidewalk at Madison Street, correct? And that's the fence that is eight feet tall?
Right, so it doesn't really run along, just so we're clear, I don't think it runs along, I wouldn't say it runs along Madison, it goes, kind of points at Madison.
It runs perpendicular to Madison.
Right. Thank you.
But I think our point is, as you're walking on Madison East, what you're looking at, once you get beyond the embankment, is you're looking at that eight-foot wall, and you can't see through to Chicago Avenue.
Okay.
I think that's the concern.
Okay.
And, and that's obviously one of my concerns as well, because if you look at all the residential, which does back up to that embankment, you're not allowed to put an eight-foot fence on the back of your property. So what's the difference between me sitting in the back of my property looking at the So, what's the difference between me sitting in the back of my property looking at the embankment or me sitting at a patio looking at the embankment? I'm not sure there's a substantial difference. And so I'm not sure why, why we need to go eight feet versus six feet, when six feet is allowed. Can I ask a question about the, the enclosure for the trash? Is that six feet or is that taller? Is that the eight feet as well?
No, no, that's just a normal six-foot trash.
That's a normal six-foot, okay. And can you talk to me about why we need twice as many outdoor seating?
Well, I think
Particularly at the expense of handicapped accessible parking?
Sure. So, one of the things that's been going on in the city is we're building a lot of tall buildings. And I think open space is at a premium. And I think essentially creating a plaza that everyone can enjoy that takes what was dumpster and not particularly attractive parking area and making it a public amenity is, is a good thing.
Well, I can enjoy it unless I'm your second handicapped person. And then there's no parking for me.
Well, I'll, I'll
Right, if I'm your second handicap patron of the night, then I don't get to park. So I guess I don't get to enjoy that space.
We, if, the, the site plan indicated, right around the corner, there is a public handicap space. If you could go to that slide. I think it might be up, it's kind of on the site plan.
If I can also point out, Mary Beth, that there are several, there are several metered spaces on Madison that are just about equidistant as this. And of course, if you have a handicap sticker, you don't have to pay the meter, so. That's not true? Scott?
I believe that the state law has changed on that and so that you do pay the meter now. Even with the placard.
That's awful.
How do those get used? The current parking spaces? Yeah, so in the new, the new revised proposal, we'd still be keeping one ADA parking space available. As we pointed out, there are the other, there's other handicapped ADA accessible spaces on the city streets, as well as immediately to the south parking lot available as well. So there's plenty of parking available.
Melissa, can you, how do other restaurants have to address ADA parking? You know, so other inline restaurants in our commercial corridors, are they required to provide ADA parking onsite?
If any onsite parking is present, then there must be ADA parking.
So, for example, who would that pertain to?
Say, the pizza place at, at Evanston Plaza at Dumpster and Dodge. There's a big parking lot there.
Yeah, that's completely different.
The ADA parking. Many restaurants in Evanston don't have any onsite parking. Therefore, they're not required to have any ADA spaces onsite.
So it, it seems to me, be, you know, this is similar to other restaurants in our commercial quarters, you know, inline restaurant with our commercial quarters that has very minimal onsite parking. And it seems almost like we're penalizing them because they have some on-street parking available for, you know, having to provide, you know, additional ADA parking. I think it's, you know, certainly advantageous and admirable, but we have, it's a pretty competitive marketplace. And to the extent that we have a new owner that's trying to stay competitive with Fireplace Grill, that's been in existence for a long time, certainly there's new residential that's moving in there. But I think the ADA issue is, I don't want to be penalizing a business unduly in ways that we don't treat other businesses.
I, I would also say that the plaza is definitely a visual improvement over the paved parking lot that is there now. And I, I noticed that you do have a canopy over the top, is that correct?
Yeah, the, the plan is currently, and there's a couple of perspectives, maybe the next one, which is a little bit more of a close-up, to have the idea of the, of the lighting and cover, the, the lights should be similar to Fountain Square, which creates a nice atmosphere, and then having some shade, which is very functional with hot sunny weather.
Right.
So, like a shade sale.
Right, well, there, I know that there's been some concern from the residents of the Amley Building that noise from the restaurant travels up and into their spaces. So I think that having the patio shielded with a canopy can, can serve to mitigate that.
I forgot to mention that was part of the plan.
To that point, there was the issue of noise traveling. So perhaps, I don't know if, if we want to consider as part of our recommendation, well, I'd like to understand what the hours, the proposed hours of the outside dining are. And, you know, the, the nearby residence spoke of the door being kept ajar, which is, you know, encourages the noise, you know, the noise issue. So if you can speak to those two points?
Sure, yeah, so, but, just to be clear, the patio is already in, in existence, so there wouldn't be any extension of the hours that, that were already operating the patio. So as far as the hours go, would be maintaining the same hours of operation on the patio.
Which is?
Currently, we have the patio open from 11:30 in the morning until 10:00 PM.
And that's Monday through Monday? That's all week? So it's not open later Friday night, Saturday night?
Friday night, Saturday night till 11:00 PM. As for the, you had mentioned the, the door being ajar. I'm, maybe just a little clarification on that. I'm, there's several doors, so I'm not
According to the letter that we received, part of the issue with the noise is that the door being kept ajar, perhaps from the restaurant to the patio, was part of the issue. My understanding was noise from inside the restaurant. Music, I'm not sure, was that, you know, noise was traveling to nearby residences.
I think it's actually the main entry door on Chicago, on Chicago Avenue that sometimes is lodged open for air and easy coming and going of patrons. And there was a request that that door be kept closed during hours of operation. Insofar as when people are not entering and exiting.
Sure, yeah, and that's, that's definitely something we can be, you know, more aware of and, and make sure we're keeping that closed as much as possible.
Oh, yeah, does anybody else have any other questions?
No.
In my own little world here. Okay, is there anybody here who'd like to speak about this project? We do have some of your neighbors, so if you guys would have a seat, we'll let them come up and, and, and tell us what they're thinking. So come on up. If you can give us your name and address, that would be great.
My name is Mary Gearing. I live at 715 Madison, which is right down the block. I brought letters from two neighbors who weren't able to be here. Can I just give those to you? Or I could use my time to read them if
Nope, we will take them and we will mark them as neighbor exhibit one and two.
One of those is from 707 Madison, and the other is directly across the street from me. I'm not sure the number, 720 maybe.
Okay.
Thank you. And my main concern has to do with the visibility of the corner. I'm a little concerned that the usage of that passage is such a heavy use for recreational people, for bikes and anyone getting to the lake. So the normal 500 feet that got this notice and this right to speak, I think really undercounts how used that passage is. Because our neighborhood sort of serves as a funnel to that viaduct because people can't get through at the other street. So there's a lot of traffic, including a lot of schoolchildren going to and from Lincoln School because we cross the boundary, so they have to cross there. So there's a lot of traffic and an eight-foot wall really would block a lot of visibility. It's already difficult for me as a driver when I'm coming home and turning onto Madison. It's a very sharp turn. When their delivery trucks are there, it, I can't see anything when I'm coming around there. And I always have to go very slowly and cautiously to come around the corner. I think an eight-foot wall would have a similar effect. And I think it would really decrease the safety of a very highly-used intersection. And safety is, is the biggest concern, but also just the aesthetics of it. When you're coming through, it's already kind of a tunnel to come through two viaducts. I agree, it's not beautiful, it's not aesthetic. For everyone except the patrons of the restaurant, this wall's only going to make that worse. It's going to be a much longer tunnel. You can't see what you're coming out to. So, rather than building a, a big wall, I would rather them see, put some money into beautifying the embankment. Can we get some public art or some flowers on the embankment or landscaping? Or something that wouldn't require, you know, wouldn't close off that for their patrons, make it, making it worse for the rest of the neighborhood. Those are my biggest concerns. I'm also a trustee for Reba Place Church, which is right on the corner of Custer and Madison. And we do have a lot of parking tightness around that neighborhood. So as a church, there's concern about adequate parking. I know it says there's only two spots that were there and only handicap, but it seems sometimes I've seen four, five cars. I don't know if they're employees when they're not open and they're there. But I don't know if more people are using those off-hours. I'm not sure whose those cars are. But if they could find places, maybe by purchasing, leasing a couple of places across where there's parking alongside the railroad tracks, that would help. But we would be concerned also about parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sure, come on up.
I'm Steve Gearing, also from 715 Madison. I, I, I see the plans there and I see the diagrams. Nine days ago, I was walking that intersection and there was a commed truck that was doing some, some work on, underground there. The commed truck was parked approximately where I understand the wall would be. I was shocked by the impact to visibility. I would urge you to perform the experiment rather than rely on diagrams or imagination because the eight-foot wall does have a huge, a surprisingly large, it surprised me, impact on visibility. They have said that the fire department does not object, but I think the fire department also should perform the experiment. Park a truck there, navigate the intersection, see if it, see if it slows response time to, to have safety. Elementary school children travel that intersection because there is, the Lincoln School District spans the, spans the tracks. The fire truck, fire department spans that, the tracks. As my wife mentioned, it's, it's many more people affected than within the 500-foot radius that's, that were, that were notified. It's, it's a large number of blocks beyond there that use that as a natural route to get to the lake. So like I say, the stakes are higher than, than for an average intersection. The intersection is already kind of strange because of the offset of the light at Kedzie versus the, the Madison offset and the lack of a left-hand turn lane off of Chicago onto Madison. So the intersection is already problematic. To add, you know, some possible visibility issues, it just, just exacerbates the problems. So I think we should think very seriously and reject the, the issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Is this one of the same letters or is this what you just? Do we, do we have this one? Do we have this one?
No, you don't have that one. That's a paraphrase of what I just said.
We're going to make this neighbor number three. Okay. Do you guys have any, any comments you'd like to make related to that? Or you can rebut or you can just sum up, either way?
No, thanks for coming. And that's, to be honest, I hadn't thought about that. And we were talking about it and we have no problem lowering it to six feet. And I think maybe if you want to go back to the plan, even maybe making more of a difference would be pulling the east end of the fence, that a wall of the fence in, because if, if
You mean the south end, right?
Tunnel, right? So if we pull it in, it'll widen that angle and bringing it down will add more visibility.
Can you be clear about that? Because I think you said east and I think you mean south.
It's on the south border of the property, so it's right along Madison Street, correct? So
Microphone, please.
Yeah, sorry, we need you to be, we need you to have the microphone, please.
So if we pull the end of the fence this way, it opens the view corridor up, which I think is the concern.
Sorry, do, do that again, I missed, I missed where the thing was.
So this is the fence. This is the end that's, seems to be problematic. So if we pull this in, it opens up the view corridor to address the concern.
Okay, so you're talking about taking the south end of the fence and moving it north.
Right, sorry, thank you for saying that much better than I did.
Yes. I was going to ask you that, if you could do that, because I think that, it's like those site triangles at corners, right? So if we can just open that up, that's going to help everybody out.
Well, and if that could be completed with, if you were to pull it back and put a much shorter planter there
If you just, yeah, sorry.
You know, fully that you could see beyond, then that would soften the look of the wall as well.
If you wrapped your three-foot planter box just around that corner, take one more module, wrap it around the corner, I think that's going to help.
Right.
That's a great idea, thank you.
To clarify, if you do a six-foot fence that is at least two feet north of that property line, then that meets the city code requirement. So if your fence variation is denied right now, you're, by code, you can do what you are currently describing.
Right. Okay. All right, is that, is that your summation?
Well, I guess I'd like to ask
Anything more you want to say about this?
How do you guys feel about that?
I need you, sorry, I need you to be at a microphone. There are people who are fascinated by this.
Yeah, what I would say is that the, the main, like being able to see through. So the planter sounds great because that's a height where you can see through and I can see kind of the corner as I'm coming around.
Right, I think that's a good solution to the problem. Doesn't solve the ADA problem, but that's neither here nor there. Anything else? Okay, great, thank you very much. We are going to close the record and comments from the board.
Okay, so my question is now what are we dealing with? We're still talking about one ADA space, because he said that he, okay. And we are doing a
The three-foot-tall wood fence, that's one foot behind the building facade.
And then now the tall, eight-foot-tall is six feet.
Yes, so what we're going to do, what we should do is technically deny that component.
Okay.
So
We're just making a recommendation.
Yep. But we don't want to recommend an eight-foot-tall wood fence.
We would like to recommend that, that city council deny the eight-foot fence in favor of a six-foot fence that is pulled some short distance back from the corner.
Yes.
So we're talking two motions now.
Hang on, Melissa wants to get in on this.
Okay.
Two feet away from the property line to be code compliant.
Okay.
In a perfect world, it'd be three or four, but
Well, that would be
We should, we should write in the, in the decision that this eight-foot is denied and they can use the allowable per the zoning coordinates fence, which is six feet, two feet from the property line.
Melissa
And if we, I would just, my opinion, if you agree with that, I think that for you guys, the difference is between the look for the patrons from inside and they will be mainly seated and somebody walking on the street. So this difference is usually five feet between the eyes of a pedestrian and the eyes of somebody sitting on the table. So you're kind of making cozy atmosphere for seating people. And at the same time, people walking on the street, most of them, I would say, could look over if the, if the fence is five feet. So my recommendation will be five feet, but the zoning coordinates allow six, so you'll be allowed to do this. Just an opinion.
Well, the other thing about the six-foot fence is I really think that the canopy, the greater enclosure of the patio is something that is desirable to a lot of the residential residents at, I'm, I know at Amley, but I think just in general, that, that it would be appreciated if that were self-contained, so to speak. So I think that the final analysis is a really good compromise. Yeah.
I want to clarify a point. So we're talking about both the height of the fence from eight-foot to possibly six-foot, as is allowed by Rite, and then the setback issue, because they were proposing this fence on, at a zero setback, right? And as of Rite, we're talking about a two-foot setback. So I'm curious, if, if it came back to two feet, a two-foot setback, how does that impact the seating of the patio, the capacity of the patio?
I don't think it does, because what you're talking about is just that last, that last planter wrapping the corner around to the left. And so it doesn't affect that seating in the corner, because I think there's still room for that, that, that foretop.
So I'm more comfortable with that when, you know, one of our conditions is it the minimum change necessary. I don't think having it on the lot line at a zero-foot setback is the minimum change necessary. So by doing that at the two-foot setback, that makes me more comfortable. My other me more comfortable. My other Go ahead.
Am I misunderstanding, excuse me, am I misunderstanding what we're saying? I thought that we were talking about just shortening the distance of the fence, not setting it all the way in from the lot line, the entire fence two feet.
We're not, because it's perpendicular to the lot line, you're just taking that last two feet off of it. So where they were going over the, what's allowed by right, we're just taking that last two feet off and just letting them do what's by right.
Okay. And the issue of the hours of operation, is that something that we need to be concerned with in terms of hours of operation for the outside patio till 11 o'clock at night?
I would like to not get into that. I know what we have done for other recreational facilities that make noise is tell them they have to keep their doors closed. And I know that that generally works. So I think if we can get them to keep, if we can put it in the ordinance, in the recommendation to keep their doors closed, that should solve most of it.
Well, and I don't think that you go to a business and have them shorten the hours from what they have been for years and years. I think that that would be, I don't think that that would be fair, so.
I also think as a new owner, it's in his best interest to be respectful of the neighborhood. And if your patrons are getting out of control, it's up to you to step in and get them back into control, because you don't want to make enemies of the neighborhood.
Well, he's a good Evanstonian.
No, I know that. I'm just saying, as a good owner, he doesn't want to do that. Now, you guys have all under, have said that you like this. I am completely against getting rid of ADA parking. I do not support that by any stretch imaginable. I don't think it's right to be taking away what is there and putting in more seating. So we're marginalizing one group of people for the benefit of others, and so I cannot get behind that. That said, doesn't really matter. So if we can just get to the, so I won't belabor the point. So if we can make those other modifications that make things better, I think that's going to be helpful. It just means that when I go through the standards for major variations, somebody's got to pipe in when I say no. All right, so the standards for major variations, there are seven of them, and number one is the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, or property values of adjoining properties. I think the standard has been met, because the addition of 36 seats to that space will not have a major impact. There's already sort of a vibrancy to that corner that is expected in that location and is expected by the multifamily across the street. So I do think that that standard has been met. Number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. The intent of the zoning ordinance is to allow businesses to expand and to make improvements to their property as is seen necessary to keep them in a competitive situation. And so I think that that standard has been met. Number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. I didn't particularly see a hardship here. I don't think that this is necessarily peculiar to the property. I know that this property has had a parking requirement in the past that just seemed to magically vanish, and that troubles me to a great extent. And so I don't think that moving, releasing them from the requirement of having two ADA spots is appropriate. So I don't believe that that standard has been met.
I agree. I believe that that standard has been met, because this is a commercial business on a main thoroughfare where very few of the restaurants have off-street parking. And for this one restaurant to be required to have two ADA parking spaces, that would disallow the expansion of their patio is, I think it's unfair to this particular business. It is by and large a transit-oriented area of the city, and there is ADA parking on the street, and they are maintaining one ADA parking space on their premises, where that's one ADA parking space more than any other restaurant I can think of along Chicago Avenue.
I agree with those points, and I would just add that when those parking numbers were put in place, I think development patterns have changed in Evanston. Our commercial quarters continue to change, and I agree that it's not in keeping with the intent to allow businesses to expand and be competitive in a competitive marketplace.
I agree with you, Mary Beth, because I do believe that the ADA parking that they point out that's on the street, there's a lot of competition for that with the other restaurants and the other businesses. And I feel like this business should be able to maintain the two that they have, that's minimum as it is.
Okay, number four, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. I don't think this standard has been met, because I'm not sure that the additional, the addition of 36 seats is necessarily a practical difficulty. I think you'd like them, and I think that they might create some additional revenue, but again, at the offset of rights to other people in the community and particularly handicapped people, I don't think that that standard has been met.
I disagree. I do think it's a practical difficulty in trying to be competitive in this marketplace. I think, I think the outdoor seating allows, encourages the vibrancy of this corridor, and so I disagree with your finding.
I would add to that, that the, when someone purchases a business, there is an immediate uptick in overhead expenditure, because you've purchased a business. And so for the businesses to be able to thrive, they need to be able to grow under those circumstances. So I don't think that it is a mere inconvenience to have to maintain a patio that is deficient for the demand of the neighborhood.
And I agree with you, Mary Beth, in that I feel like that this is not a practical difficulty. This is about commercialism, and to have another ADA parking space might not eliminate all 72 of his new seats.
Number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property, or there's a public benefit. Clearly, the point of this is to extract additional income, which is fine. It's just that in doing that, we hope that there is a public benefit. And I do think that there, to a certain extent, there is a public benefit of this being more of an open, vibrant plaza slash patio, sort of a more animated corner. However, I just can't offset that with the decrease in benefit to a handicapped population that is getting marginalized by the minute. And so I just, I don't see that that as being a higher benefit than the benefit of meeting the requirements of providing parking for handicapped populations. So I don't believe that that standard has been met.
I agree with you. I would say that, that perhaps we refer Pat to Inclusion Solutions. And there are, do you plan to have any valet service at all? Well, the Inclusion Solutions is a business here in Evanston that provides solutions precisely for issues such as this, so that if you have a handicap patron come to the front, they can, you know, they can park their car, they can actually even call in to your restaurant and say, "I'd like to come and get a table." Have someone available to go out and park their car in one of the other spaces and go get it for them. I mean, that's what Inclusion Solutions has been doing for a lot of businesses, is finding ways to accommodate handicap patrons. But I don't think that the patio should be, that this business should not be allowed to grow for a new owner. Furthermore, I think that there is a public benefit in that, that is not an attractive lot right now. I'm sorry, but it's not. And I think that most of us neighbors along Madison Street will agree with that. And I think that this is an improvement that makes a big difference. And in order to expand and improve the business overall, you have to let the business grow.
No, I'm sorry, you can't. We've closed the record and unfortunately, yep. So sorry to be tough about that. Number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. Certainly, the lot size as it is and the location of the building, that's all existing, and the number of parking spaces that are on the site are all existing. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number seven, the requested variation requires the least deviation from the applicable regulation among the feasible options identified before the Zoning Board of Appeals. I don't believe that standard has been met, because they're asking for, to get, to give up the, both handicapped accessible parking spots that they currently have, which is not the least change.
Wait, can you clarify that? They brought one back?
Okay.
So they're asking to
Okay, so they had two, and they've given, they're asking to give up one. I don't believe that that's the least deviation necessary. I don't think there should be any deviation from the required parking, the required parking for this location. So I personally do not believe that that standard has been met.
And I agree.
And I disagree. I'm glad that based on Dapper's comments, they were able to include one of those ADA parking spots back into the site plan. I'm also more comfortable with the proposal now that we have been able to shorten that fence, you know, and sort of address that view corridor for the pedestrians and drivers in that area. So I do think, you know, I disagree with your findings.
Thank you. So, because we have, this is a recommendation, and it seems that we are going to recommend against the eight-foot tall fence and the zero-foot street-side yard setback, and recommend approval for the other. I would ask that we separate this into two motions to make it clear. And so who wants to do that?
No, but it sounds as though we may need three motions, because there is, there is a motion for the allowance of a single ADA parking space. There is a motion for approval of the fencing.
Yep, the three-foot tall fence.
The three-foot fence with a one-foot setback. And then there's the proposal for the eight-foot fence, which we're saying will be denied.
Right.
So that would make it three motions.
Sure, three motions then.
Okay, I'll go first. I move in the case of ZBA 18ZMJV0044, that we recommend to city council that they approve the variation allowing the three-foot fence with planters at a one-foot setback rather than a three-foot setback along Chicago Avenue.
I second that motion.
Yes, we moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So that one goes to city council with a recommendation.
Okay. I further move that in the case of ZB 18ZMJV0044, that we recommend approval of the inclusion of a single ADA parking space on the premises in order to allow for the expansion of the patio, the exterior patio.
Can we make, can I suggest a friendly amendment, that we add language, that they work with Inclusion Solutions? Because I thought that was, I thought that was smart thinking, and I'd like to better understand what sort of possibilities they might be able to bring to the table.
Sure. So I would, I would recommend that we, or I would move that we recommend approval by the city council for one ADA parking space on the premises, with the provision that the business seek the assistance of Inclusion Solutions to accommodate other handicap clients that might wish to patronize the firehouse grill.
Second.
Yes, we moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. So with a vote of three to two, that goes to city council with a recommendation as well. And then the last but not least.
The last, in the case of ZBA 18ZMJV0044, I recommend that we, I move that we recommend to city council that they deny the variance for an eight-foot fence with zero setback along Madison Street.
Second.
Yes, we moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And with a vote of five to zero, that goes to city council with a recommendation for denial. So good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Moving on to 2112 Ewing Avenue. You guys are here. Melissa, if you would read that into the record, please. What? You're not here, you're not here. Oh, yeah, but they weren't here when we went through them. So they moved to the end.
All right, you're good with this one?
Yeah.
Margaret Hens, property owner, applies for major zoning relief to eliminate conditions imposed on granted variation case ZAR 0133M, to allow the coach house to be legally occupied and rented by persons who are not members of the family occupying the principal dwelling unit, as would otherwise be allowed by city code if not for the variation conditions. Zoning Code Section 63814. The Zoning Board of Appeals is the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record include variation application submitted May 22, 2018, coach house conditions from the 2001 approval, plot of survey, interior site plan, tax bill history, letters of support and objection, adopted ordinance 47018, text amendment to the definition of coach house, image of property, aerial view of property, zoning map of property, Dapper draft meeting minutes excerpt of June 6, 2018, as well as a packet of additional letters of support and opposition that have come in since the ZBA packet posted, and a map showing properties in the general area that are, and whether they are, have submitted letters in support or opposition, but noting that there are a few properties that are off the map that are therefore not shown.
Thank you.
Hi.
Start by giving us your name and address.
My name is Margaret Hens. I live at 2112 Ewing Avenue in Evanston.
Great. And I know that there are quite a few people who are here to speak on this, so if you could limit your presentation to about 20 minutes, that would be great.
I will take that line.
Perfect.
Well, thank you all for taking the time tonight to review this property. I'm here to request two things. Number one, to remove the 17-year-old condition from the 2112 Ewing Coach House that had been placed on it in exchange for being built four and a half feet taller than the standard, so that it can be rented under the same ordinance that now allows every other existing coach house in Evanston to be rented. The number two thing is to not include a condition of affordability, which city council specifically removed from the coach house ordinance and whose final draft has yet to be written. Instead of this condition, I would like to suggest the condition that one of the two homes be owner-occupied instead. I know you've received six or seven letters of concern about this coach house being rented, maybe seven or eight. I'm not sure of the total number. I actually have a couple more petitions. But I know you also received 26 or 27 letters and petitions of approval for the coach house to be rented. However, with any variance, I know it's not just a matter of majority opinion, and I know there are standards to be met. So I'd like to take this time to show the variance I'm requesting tonight does meet the seven standards to grant this variance, and to hopefully shed some light on any of the concerns that you've received. Sorry, I didn't know you guys went through the variances afterwards, so I'm just going to go through them now. Okay, number one, this will not have substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, or property values of the adjoining properties. Obviously, this is a big one. A few concerns around this first standard were raised. The first one I'm going to address is density. If you can go to the other direction for the parcel map, would be great, perfect. Allowing this coach house to be rented would not significantly increase the density of this block. The small main home and coach house are on a double-wide lot, and even with two families living there, the density of the property would remain in keeping with the rest of the neighborhood. There are currently 19 families on our block, including two families in a two-flat just 50 feet away from mine. Adding a family to the coach house would bring our total family count to 20. This is not a significant amount and nowhere near the density that some other coach houses, coach house rentals are now bringing to their blocks. For example, the single block at the former site of Kendall College has 19 homes and 11 coach houses built only six years ago, with the assurance that the coach houses would not become rentals. That changed with January's new ordinance, which brings the possible number of families on that one block from 19 to a possible 30. Our block would only increase by one family, most likely an increase headcount of three people. As you can see, allowing this coach As you can see, allowing this coach house to be rented would not significantly increase the density on the block, and so will not have substantial negative impact on the adjoining properties. Parking, this is a non-issue. Our neighborhood has abundance of parking, probably triple the amount we need. Everybody just parks right in front of their house. If you have to park one car away, it's very odd. Allowing this coach house to be rented would not cause any parking issues. Neighborhood integrity, allowing this coach house to be rented would not significantly change the integrity or feel of the neighborhood on this block. One family living in a coach house tucked in the back of a large lot hardly has the power to change the neighborhood. Furthermore, rental dwellings are completely in keeping with the history of our block and its current makeup. 72 feet from my property is a large home that was first a four-flat several decades ago, then it was changed to a two-flat, and then it was changed to a single-family home. Just 50 feet away from my property is a two-flat that has been there for over 100 years and has currently lived in by two renting families. Allowing the coach house to be rented is in keeping with the neighborhood, and so will not have any substantial impact on the neighborhood. Use and enjoyment, I'm addressing this because it's specifically mentioned in the standard that a variance not have substantial impact on the use and enjoyment of adjoining properties. The coach house, as I said, is tucked in the back of a double-wide lot, which is separated by its neighbors, from its neighbors, by an eight-foot wood fence. It is over 50 feet away from every home in the neighborhood except for my north neighbor, who wrote a letter in support of allowing it to be rented. There is nothing to show that renting this coach house would have a negative impact on the use and enjoyment of the surrounding neighbors. Property values, with parking a non-issue, the change in density negligible, use and enjoyment unaffected, and neighborhood integrity intact, it follows that renting this coach house would not adversely affect property values of the neighborhood. In fact, rental of this coach house will only increase surrounding neighborhood values. When property estimates are made for real estate sites, they take the average of all the neighborhood sales, meaning the property selling for a higher amount, no matter what the reason, automatically brings up the total average of home values for the whole neighborhood. Cook County valued this entire property with two dwellings at $650,000, and then two years ago sent the tax bill to prove it. Cook County counts both structures as homes and taxes it accordingly, but unless the coach house is able to be rented, it most likely will seldom be a home, and it's unrealistic to think that the next 100 years of future owners will have a steady stream of relatives to fill it. Without the coach house, this property would only be valued around $400,000. This low value is not good for the neighboring properties. However, allowing the coach house to be rented as a standard rental brings the property value closer to the $650,000 that Cook County assessed it at, and that is good for neighboring properties. As we'll later review, the suggested affordability clause to this rental would give the coach house one-third less of what it should be based on tax valuation, which in turn means less property value boost for the surrounding neighborhood. Either way, the coach house, either way, allowing the coach house to be rented will only have a positive effect on the neighborhood property values as it increases the overall sale average. So as you can see, this requested variance does meet the first standard and will not have substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, or property values of adjoining Standard number two, it is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. The intent of the new ordinance covering existing coach houses was to remove previous restrictions and allow them to be added to the rental pool. It is also key to note that city council specifically removed the affordability clause before unanimously passing the ordinance. Allowing this coach house to be rented as a regular dwelling is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. Standard number three, this hardship is particular only to this property. This coach house is literally the only existing coach house in Evanston that is currently unable to be rented. Standard number four, the property owner would suffer financial hardship. With Cook County taxing this property based on a valuation of $650,000, not allowing the coach house to be rented places a disproportionate burden on what is otherwise a modest 1,400 square foot basementless home. Not only would future owners be paying taxes on a dwelling that is largely unusable, they would be paying for its heating and maintenance costs as well, all for a home that is unable for most intents and purposes to be lived in. Standard number five, the purpose of the variance is not based exclusively on the desire for more income. This is a practical matter. Both dwellings are being taxed and both are fully built as homes that need to be maintained and repaired, and allowing one to stand empty due to a lack of future relatives to fill it is a waste of housing, a waste of resources, and does not contribute to the neighborhood. Standard number six, this condition was not created by the owner. The previous owner got permission from Evanston 17 years ago to make the coach house four and a half feet taller than standard. Out of all the coach houses, all the 200-plus coach houses covered by the new ordinance, 2112 Ewing is not the tallest, nor the newest, nor is it the one with the most controversy surrounding it. I think that dubious award probably goes to the Kendall College coach houses. This condition was not created by me, however, I do think it's time for this property to stop being an outlier and be brought into the group it has the most in common with the other 200-plus existing coach houses in Evanston. And lastly, standard number seven, this requested variation requires the least deviation from the regulation. Bringing this existing coach house under the same ordinance as all other existing coach houses does require the least amount of deviation from the regulation and brings this single outlier solidly into a group. I felt it was very important to take the time to review those seven standards since I know that's what you use to determine each case. And as you see, this property does meet every standard needed in order to remove the condition of non-rental. Cities change, and short-sighted or unsustainable decisions made in the past should not be upheld without good reason. I hope my review of these seven standards helps show that allowing this coach house to be rented is logical and truly in the best interest of the neighborhood as a whole. Finally, I want to review the affordability condition that staff suggested be added to this rental. I understand that when the city gives something, it wants to get something returned, but the primary purpose of a condition is to create an atmosphere of compromise within the immediate neighborhood. Based on the comments found in the petitions and letters you received from both sides of this issue, the condition of affordability is not that compromise that the neighborhood prefers. Instead, I want to suggest a condition of the property being owner-occupied with only one of the homes being rented at a time. This is a condition which many neighbors supported and is a condition that would truly address some remaining concerns. And I believe, I just recently got these in, I only petitioned starting last week, but I had listed some things that people could check as preferences, and that was one of them. You know, do they prefer it to be affordable or not prefer it to be affordable, and would they prefer that it be owner-occupied? Additionally, the 80% AMI suggested is unduly low for an expensive neighborhood with very expensive taxes. An 80% AMI for this coach house puts it at a rental amount of only 66% of what it would rent for in the open market, without even factoring in the additional loss of paying tenant utilities. And I actually put together, there's a couple embarrassing typos on here, but there's a little summary of this, that one. Yeah, that's perfect. It kind of shows how it breaks down. Let's see. And finally, allowing this coach house to be rented even without the affordability clause adds to the overall housing pool, which in turn helps to make all housing more affordable in Evanston. In fact, I experienced this firsthand as a year ago I moved to Michigan for work and rented the coach house to a young family of three, which was allowed under the current condition since they were the only family living on the property for that time of their lease. Once their lease was up, they asked to stay another month since they had not been able to find a new place to live after four weeks of searching. This family's income was well above any need for affordable housing, and yet they found it difficult to find any housing. And so this coach house can be added to the rental pool and can become a productive, much-needed home without having an affordable condition placed on it, one which is unduly low and is not preferred by many in the neighborhood. In summary, forcing this coach house to remain empty while the city grows around it is a waste of a good home and a waste of resources. Its emptiness reduces neighborhood property values and really serves no purpose. As the 27 positive petitions and letters neighbors sent over the past week demonstrate, the neighborhood is open to 2112 Ewing Coach House being brought into the fold under the new ordinance that covers every other existing coach house in Evanston. And while many indicated they would prefer it not be affordable housing and others indicated they would prefer one of the homes be owner-occupied, the majority consensus was that this coach house should be allowed to be rented, as all the other existing coach houses in Evanston are today. Thank you for your time on that.
I have a couple questions for you. I'm sure everybody else does too. Does anybody else want to go first? Okay. Can you tell me when you bought the property?
I bought the property five years ago.
Okay. And it is not owner-occupied right now? You live someplace else?
No, I do live in it now.
Okay.
Yeah, I moved back.
Okay. And let's talk about taxes a little bit, because I didn't see a homeowner exemption on there.
Yeah, basically, no, I should have filed a homeowner's exemption. I'll have to look. Basically, yeah, when the taxes came out, I had just lost my job when the taxes came out last year, and in the rush of moving and, you know, to get a new job and so on, I somehow didn't receive my new tax bill. It slipped my mind and I didn't appeal it. And however, I am told, I talked to Mitzi Gibbs in the tax office. And she said that one of the reasons the taxes went from $7,500 to almost $16,000 two years ago was because Cook County just hadn't ever noticed that coach house back there before. And so now they noticed it and they are taxing it accordingly as a home.
Right, so for five years, you got a benefit of having a coach house without paying for it?
Yes, but it was an unrentable coach house, so it was an empty coach house.
Well, rentable to somebody in the family, because that was a condition you knew when you bought it.
Oh, for sure, yeah. Yes, for sure.
Okay.
For sure. I mean, you know, and I was, you know, and that is fine. I am just looking to sell it now because I don't want to really deal with the taxes and all this stuff anymore. I'm moving, I'm tired of the winter. That's a whole different issue.
Okay.
But basically...
But you're moving out of Evanston?
I'm moving to North Carolina.
Okay.
Yeah, I was, basically what happened is, I mean, I don't know that it was that much of a tax break, to be honest, because the main house was in a pretty rough state when I bought the property. I would say I bought the property for $300,000 five years ago, and I would say that was really what it was worth.
And did you get permits for all that work?
Most of what I did was, I did get permits for windows. I had floors re-covered over floors. We skin coated a lot of drywall, put in new toilets.
It's possible that that change in tax is also a reflection of that, right?
No, that work was just done a few months ago.
Okay.
Yeah, so basically, I had, when the taxes just went through the roof, I actually put it on the market in the fall, and then it just wasn't selling in that very decrepit state. Because I had, you know, I had really stripped it down. And basically, I, then when I talked to Mitzi about the taxes, and I actually had come in and spoken to Scott, and I had been under the impression that my coach house was covered by this new ordinance after chatting with him. And so then I decided, well, I'm gonna, you know, I had been going to sell it sort of as-is, and so then I decided, you know what, I'm going to fix it up and sell it and then sort of be done with it.
And you've read through the documents that the number of people who are allowed to be in that coach house are only two. So when you rented it to three people?
How is that possible? Because the affordable number would be three.
Melissa will explain.
Yeah, I was completely, sorry.
So we had emailed back and forth a little bit about this, but basically, the property maintenance code requires that if it is considered a three-bedroom unit, which you can consider that you have three bedrooms, then you have to have a combined living and dining area, not counting the kitchen, of at least 200 square feet, which you don't make. Therefore, that can't be considered a third bedroom and as a two-bedroom unit of that size...
But it's a husband, wife, and a child.
You can look for clarification with our property standards. They are the experts on it. My understanding was that you'd be limited to two.
Okay, yeah, because I had, when I did look up the affordable housing situation, I thought we had discussed, and also that I had discussed with Savannah, and even looked at the chart, that a two-bedroom would be three people in it, affordable. So I assume that for renting purposes, or regular renting purposes, it would be the same?
For the affordable housing requirement, they're not looking at room sizes and those code requirements, so it's an apples and oranges thing, but we can talk afterwards depending on how things go.
So, yes, so for a year when I did not, for the year that I was in Michigan, I did rent it to a young couple and their daughter. It's a two-bedroom. That seemed logical to me, that each didn't need their own bedroom. And then I actually, when their lease was up, they were supposed to leave and they were unable to find housing. At that time, I had moved back, and so there was an overlap of probably two weeks where we were both living on the property. But it was not intentional, which doesn't excuse it, but it was one of these things where I'm like, please leave and...
Was that rental? When you had that rental, was that licensed?
I did not license it, no.
Okay. Can we talk briefly about the standard number five? The purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income. It seems clear to me that it is, and that, so what we're looking for is that public benefit. And that public benefit is really why everyone is talking about having affordable housing.
Okay.
There's a concern throughout the city of Evanston that affordable housing is limited to neighborhoods where the average income is less, and that we really need to spread these out throughout every single community and every ward throughout, right?
Makes sense.
So this is a perfect opportunity. We don't have very many opportunities in the seventh ward to be able to, sorry, sixth, to be able to get some affordable housing into the neighborhood. So that is the public benefit. So you're saying that's not a public benefit?
No, I agree that could be a public benefit. My understanding for condition was that it was usually put on as a way to appease or make a compromise with a more immediate neighborhood for something that was happening in their neighborhood. That, you know, obviously, having this property be affordable would be ideal, you know, would be better than not having it rented at all, for sure. And I understand the need, and I was actually completely shocked at the city council meeting when that clause was just somehow taken off. But the reality is, is that it was removed and that I feel that this coach house has more in common with the other 200-plus existing coach houses that exist today than it does with anything else. And none of those have the affordability clause on it.
Except that you got a benefit, I mean, not you specifically, but the previous owner got a benefit. Their benefit was they were able to build it five and a half feet taller. That makes a substantial difference to that second floor. Without that extra five and a half feet, that second floor doesn't exist, and there is no living space up there. So there is a clear benefit that came with that coach house. And that benefit now was first modified, was first mediated by limiting it to a family, someone in the family who could rent that. And now that that restriction has been removed, right, you still get the benefit, and so we're still looking for, potentially, the, if and when that gets removed, right, by this newer ordinance, there's still a benefit, you still get the benefit without the public benefit.
Right, right. So you're looking for the benefit to the neighborhood, right?
Right, because I think that although you suggest that a homeowner, an owner-occupied, one of those units being owner-occupied, I don't think that that's a real public benefit to have that be owner-occupied. I think that's going to be the norm. I don't think that that particular location is going to go to an investor who's going to rent out both units.
I agree.
I don't think that's, so...
I do agree with that. That was just a concern that I was hearing and saw in some of the letters.
I appreciate, but I don't think that's a real benefit. I also don't particularly think that, have you considered that most of the coach houses in Evanston aren't actually rented out? Most coach houses in Evanston are used as somebody's home business or a studio space or something like that. So I don't think you're necessarily reducing your market share and your ability to market this and sell it by having that be a second space.
I think at this, I'm sorry.
No, please go ahead.
I think at... I think at, it's a little tricky, because, you know, when you look at this price tag and it says $650,000, that's a big hunk of money. But in reality, this house is a very modest house. It's a very small house. It actually is six inches below grade. It...
Right, it's one of those weird Luxembourg houses.
Exactly.
Yep.
And so, and it doesn't have a basement, you know, so it's got a lot of kind of quirkiness going for it. And really, without this coach house, it's basically a $400,000 house, which is fine, except for it's being taxed at $650,000. Additionally...
But isn't that an opportunity to appeal that to the Cook County assessor? Rather than, rather than come to us for, for an appeal to what you were allowed to put in there, right? Take that back to who is actually causing you the harm, which is the Cook County assessor.
Good luck with that, Mary Beth.
Yeah, I've been told that it's two different entities.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure the zoning board of appeals is the place to deal with Cook County assessor.
Right, no, for sure, it's not. Yeah, for sure it's not.
It's not, but I think that the point that's being made is that the desire to extract additional income is the direct result of the Cook County assessor having assessed this property as two dwelling units, which makes a big difference in terms of how they will tax it. So, yes, you want to extract additional income because it has become necessary based on the Cook County assessor's evaluation of it as a, so do you know, it's a Class 212 then?
I don't know.
I didn't look closely enough at the tax bill, but, you know, one way or the other, that is going to make a big difference.
No, it's a 205.
Okay, well, 205. But, you know, that being said, and speaking to Mary Beth's point, and looking at some of the comments about having this unit be an affordable unit, at the affordable rent that is noted, 1523 per month, that would cover the entire $18,000 tax bill. So, and I think that the perceived, how shall I put it, I almost want to say fear, of an affordable unit is really unfounded. You know, as you have found, there are so many people, you know, wonderful people of modest means looking for homes in Evanston. So I think that you could accommodate that request for some benefit to the community and get this done in a heartbeat.
Yeah, yeah, and I appreciate that. I, you know, I had been a bit disappointed. I did, you know, I had chatted with Scott back in February, and I was under the impression that this ordinance did cover my coach house. I assumed the others that hadn't been able to be rented. And I think last time I looked, a couple of years ago, the amount of coach houses that were being rented, that had registered, were something like, I think, over 100 at the time. And I know this adds another 100 potential renters to the mix. And I think that while some people may be interested in using it for working for home, or even, you know, for relatives, I mean, it's a little difficult for older people. It's up a flight of stairs, you know, but, so you can't keep, you know, an aging relative there, really, but, well, I think that's the case. You know, I do know, for example, it is a significant decrease in value to be able to rent something for, you know, $2,200 a month versus $1,500 a month less utilities. I'm not unhappy with the affordable solution. You know, I do think that it, you know, it kind of seems like it should have been done across the board to all coach houses. It was rather odd the way it was just kind of taken off at the last minute, but, you know, and so it does seem a little bit like this one is being singled out. However, you know, I understand, it's the way it goes. I don't really know what else to tell you.
I have a couple of questions.
Yep.
Do we know how many coach houses there are in the sixth ward?
In the sixth ward?
There's got to be probably a handful.
I think you can count them on one hand.
Yeah, not many at all. So, my point is, is that another way of thinking about public benefit here is that this is adding to the housing supply, a type of housing that generally does not exist in the sixth ward. So if you have families, or, you know, whether it's a couple, and, you know, however this, however you define how many people can occupy this unit, that are interested in northwest Evanston, that want to be in, is this Lincolnwood School, is the neighborhood school? That want to be in Lincolnwood School, there are not many options for smaller units in that area. So providing a housing unit that is smaller is another way of considering public benefit.
I mean, we do have two families just down the block who live in, like I said, who live in a two-flat, you know, semi-retired couple, and a mom and her daughter. I mean, I think, you know, it's not a neighborhood that is really gonna appeal to college students, obviously.
Right.
It's gonna appeal to people who are looking for something that is in a good school district and is so on.
So the price of entry to this particular area of Evanston is very high, and so this provides, you know, a rental unit in an area that's difficult to rent. So in my mind, that's another way of considering public benefit.
Okay, thank you.
I would also say, just to staff here, that I am a little bit troubled that the affordable housing requirement would be put on this unit contrary to all of the other coach houses. Again, I do think it is the exceptionalism of the requirement that, it's almost like you're, you know, we're considering that because we can, because this allowance, this variance had this condition on it. And I'm not sure that I see that as being an altogether equitable policy, even though, on the other hand, I would really like to see an affordable unit in the sixth ward. So I'm struggling with that issue.
Do you have any other questions for the applicant? Because I know we've got a lot of people who'd like to talk.
Then I just had one question.
Yeah, sure.
My understanding was, the recommendation was for a sunset clause at 10 years, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Which then is not unreasonable for a new owner, right? 10 years is a blink of an eye.
Yeah, yeah. My five years went by very quickly. It was going to be my forever home and...
Yep, stuff happens.
Yeah, stuff happens. I wanted to have my foster kids, but it didn't work out, so it's moving on.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much. If you wouldn't mind having a seat, we'll let your neighbors come up and, so, I don't, do you want to go get me the list? So, I know some people walked in late, so I'm going to go ahead and ask everybody who wasn't here before to go ahead, if you plan on speaking, to raise your right hand. I know there were people who weren't here. I'm talking to you, the 1822 Lions folks. Yeah, 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 I need you guys, I need you guys to do that too. So do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings? Perfect, thank you. We now have a list, and Abby, I don't know how to pronounce your last name. You want to come up? And since we have about 10 or 12 people, if you can limit your comments to about three minutes, that'd be outstanding and much appreciated. And as always, if you agree with what somebody else said, just come up and say, "I agree." It means just as much to us.
Good evening.
Thanks.
I am Abby Prujan. I live at 2108 Ewing Avenue. My husband Peter Steinhaus and I are longtime Evanston residents. We've owned and lived at 2108 Ewing since March 1997. In 2001, the original variation requested by the then owners stated that, quote, "The applicant proposes to demolish an existing garage and construct a new garage." A variance was needed at that time because the height of the proposed new garage exceeded the limits imposed by the city. We were asked by our neighbors to write a letter to the city stating that we were not opposed to the height of the new garage. We did so at that time in an effort to be good neighborly. When it was revealed that in addition to a garage, there would be an apartment as a part of the structure, it was stipulated that the apartment constructed above the garage was never to be rented to non-relatives, and that there would never be more than one family living on the property as a whole. We were assured by the then owners that the apartment was for their business and/or an in-law apartment. The current owner, the property at 2112 Ewing Avenue, was well aware of the limits regarding the rental of the garage apartment when she purchased the property in 2013. Her ownership immediately followed a contentious fight to overturn the variance, which resulted in her purchase of the property. Since that time, the city of Evanston has changed their ordinance regarding non-relative rental of accessory dwellings in R1 neighborhoods such as ours. However, the restrictive covenant on this accessory dwelling remains in place. The current owner is now seeking to sell the property and is once again requesting that the original variance be lifted to allow further rental of the garage apartment. It's her intention to maximize the price on the sale of this property by advertising it currently, prior to a decision made here tonight by the zoning board of appeals that it has an income-producing coach house. There are no other coach houses on our block or on the contiguous blocks. We live in a single-family neighborhood. We chose to live in a single-family neighborhood in 1997 when we purchased our home. We lent our support to the construction of an oversized garage with an apartment above it in 2001 in an effort to be good neighbors, excuse me. We would never have agreed to the construction of this new garage in 2001 if the contingency, barring multiple families living on the property, was not built into the variance, which made the structure possible in the first place. With the overturning of the restrictive variance, we are extremely concerned that this unusual and confusing piece of property would then be eligible for as many as four or five unrelated persons to rent in both the primary and accessory dwellings. The current owner herself shared with us in conversation that if the roles were reversed, she would be opposed to this property becoming a rental property as well. We stand firmly in opposition to a neighbor who seeks to change the nature and culture of this block and then move away. Ms. Hens posits in her application that, quote, "If only relations can live in the coach house, it will probably be vacant a majority of the years ahead." We do not believe that this is a valid argument. There are many other options for the use of this structure, which are in keeping with the intention of the original variance: personal home office, workshop, workspace, creative space. Suppositions of what will probably happen are not a reason to remove a variance. None of us has the ability to know what the future will bring. Her suggestion that rental of the garage structure, quote, "Will positively impact the neighborhood since it will allow the property to be properly maintained by a future owner," is also not a valid argument, in my opinion. We are confident that future owners will be quite capable of maintaining this property, just as Ms. Hens has been able to in the last five years that she's lived there. We do not believe that this is an application to improve the quality of our neighborhood or our street. We believe that this is an application intended to maximize the owner's profit on the sale of the property. Why should a resident seeking to leave the neighborhood be allowed to have a say in what it will look like when she's gone? Peter and I have lived here for 21 years. We've raised our daughters here, and we have every intention to live here for at least another 21. We recognize that the garage apartment at 2112 Ewing Avenue is an unfortunate and confusing complication to this property. This is not a traditional coach house. It is not a traditional garage, and it should not be compared to a 100-year-old two-flat that resides on the same block, all of which are suggested by Ms. Hens in her application to the zoning board. This is a structure which towers over all of the neighborhood buildings. In square footage, this structure is 65% the size of the main dwelling. It is 900 square feet compared to a 1,400-square-feet primary dwelling. There is nothing traditional about this structure, and it should not be treated like any other coach house in Evanston. Although the DAPR committee has recommended that the building is structurally appropriate for rental inhabitants, this unique structure only came into existence because of the unique and restrictive variance on its inhabitants. We feel strongly about upholding and enforcing the original variance, limiting the rental of this apartment, such that it be inhabited, rental or otherwise, by persons related to those in the primary dwelling. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mary Gary, nope, sorry, that was the other project. Carla Sutton, are you here to talk about this one?
No.
Okay, that's the other one. Okay. Let's go with Jeannie Lasman.
Hi.
My name is Jeannie Lasman. I moved to Evanston in late 2009, and I live at 2116 Ewing Avenue. I also live in a quirky little Luxembourg farmhouse, and I do support Peggy's ability to rent this coach house for a young family. I think it's very important in Evanston. It was an opportunity that wasn't given to me when I was looking for housing in Evanston, and I would have really appreciated the ability to live in a cute coach house like this. If you look at the pictures online that she provided, it's a very nicely, well-maintained building, and I think any young family or young couple moving to Evanston, if it's grad students at Kellogg, or young working professionals, they would appreciate the opportunity to move into our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Nope, that's a different one. Brad Knight?
My name's Brad Knight. I live in 2109 Forest View, which is the house immediately behind the property in question. I would agree with everything that the first speaker mentioned. I've lived there for 15 years with our family. We moved there 15 years ago from out of state, and we love the neighborhood. It's unfortunate that this issue continues to come up and drive a division between our neighbors, who get along on all other topics, but this topic has continued to fester. We were here, just to put it in perspective, really discussing a very similar issue, must have been about six years ago now. The particulars are a little bit different, but the principle is the same, is that everybody has always been under agreement of the status and the rules of this structure. When we bought the property, it was two years after it had been built. We were well aware of the rules, that it would be never rented to anybody outside the main family of the main house. That rule was violated several times. When we brought it up to a similar council, I think some of you may have been here then, the vote was six to one in our favor. There was even a council member who abstained a vote because he felt it should have never come to this council. So, the only argument that I've heard, that I don't think is compelling, the only argument that I've heard that's been proposed, which I would argue was not compelling, is this uniformity argument, that we need to put it in the fold of all the other coach houses. This coach house is very different than other coach houses. It's significantly larger, there's no similar structures nearby, and if I wouldn't, if you don't mind, I have pictures. Am I allowed to share these?
Sure.
Because I couldn't bring them.
Yep.
So these are pictures that are the perspective from our house.
We're going to call these neighbor one through however many you got it. How many do you have?
Six is all I have.
All right, one through six.
That was two pictures.
All right.
So, this structure is quite large and imposing, and although the pictures that were provided previously show it tucked away into the back of the lot, that also is tucked away very close to the back of our property. Another thing I would actually question and would like information on is, the windows in this coach house face away from the main property, not toward it. There are several windows that face directly into the windows of our children, and that has been an issue and a concern of ours in the past that we brought up at the last meeting. I would say, another argument that I would try to propose is the definition of the coach house, as I saw online, and I think you have it in your material here. This is a structure that's significantly larger than the main property, and I would argue it doesn't fit the definition of a coach house.
Can you clarify that last statement? If I understood correctly, the main principal structure is around 1,400 square foot, and the accessory structure is around 900 square feet? Are those numbers accurate? So then I don't understand...
That must not, the volume of that building is significantly bigger than the primary house, and I guess that square footage must not include the garage. Must not include the garage.
Thank you.
The building itself's volume is much larger than the front house.
So, to your, to your concern, so the structure is there, so some of your concerns, if I understand correctly, are related to sort of the maest, the volume of the structure, the way the windows are situated at the structure, those are forgone?
That's not going to change.
That's not going to change. So now we have this structure there, so is your concern with having more people on site?
Yeah, if I may interrupt you, my concern is knowing the people well that live in that structure, which is, I can see the faces of the people in that window. So I think... basis is a rental property within a few feet of my patio.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody I missed? Anybody? Anybody?
Can I say that I agree?
Sure, you can come up and give me your name and address and say, yep, I agree with everything that somebody just said.
My name is Tanya Knight, and I live at 2109 Forest View, and I agree with what Abby Poonjin and Bradley Knight said completely.
Great, thank you so much. Come on up, and you want to get here.
My name is Laura Bianchi, and I live at 2800 Payne. I wanted to also say that I agree with Jeanne and Margaret, and I hadn't planned to speak, but I will say, I lived in a coach house years ago, and it was really nice to have the opportunity to live in a neighborhood that I wouldn't have been able to live in. And now I live in this wonderful neighborhood, I'd love someone else to have a chance to do it, too. That's it.
Thank you. All right, is that, yep, come on up.
Hi, my name is Camilla Fabri. I live at 2111 Ewing Avenue.
Oh, you're going to have to spell that last name for me.
F-A-B-B-R-I.
Okay. And you are where?
And I'm in agreement with Jean Lassman's.
Sorry, what was your address?
I'm in agreement, oh, my address?
Yep.
2111 Ewing Avenue.
Okay.
And I'm in agreement with Jean Lassman's statement in favor of the rental.
Great, thank you so much. Last call? Anybody else? Absolutely, that's what comes next, is you get to comment and rebut or answer anybody's questions. You can rebut them, or you can just come up with a closing statement. It's your choice.
All righty, we have a little mixed bag. First of all, five years ago, as Abby alluded to, the then-owner had brought this up as a hardship case, and she wanted to be able to rent the coach house because of that. That's a whole different thing. That's not this time. I wouldn't have even been asking, and I have not asked in all these five years, for this to be allowed to be rented. I was only asking now because literally every other existing coach house in Evanston is able to be rented. And because I had, I had thought I'd done my due diligence by talking with Scott about this property, and I thought that was the green light and that it was approved to be rented, I borrowed a ton of money, like I said, and to refinish floors and so on, and in order to put it on the market. And so, that is why, and I only just recently, you know, discovered, and once again, this is my own fault for not having done correct due diligence, I am not obviously that familiar with government. I assumed that the other 100-plus coach houses also had some sort of condition that allowed them not to be rented, but obviously, that's not the case. But anyway, so I just don't want to confuse that case with the case today. The case today is only being requested because of this recent ordinance being passed. Furthermore, you know, I think it's kind of reaching, some of the arguments that my, a few of my neighbors have brought, you know, have been that parking, they're concerned about parking, which, if you'd see, our neighborhood's a complete non-issue. I feel like some of these are stretches, like really, you can see into the coach house, which is 100 feet or at least 70 feet away from your own, at the back of your lot, across the alley, and into, some of these arguments are not, I don't necessarily that they think that they're kind of meaningful. And as you all know, this coach house actually is the Quinton, the very definition of the coach house, which was a definition that Evanston recently clarified. As you mentioned, the volume of the coach house, the extra four-and-a-half feet that it is, it's not going to change, you know, and so, that's a foregone conclusion. Whether or not family live in it, or it's empty, it's gonna still be there, and it was definitely a mistake to have allowed it to exist to begin with, but it's there, and it's got to be dealt with. And leaving it empty when there are people unable to find any kind of housing at any prices, I mean, or, that's exaggeration, but you get my drift, is rather wasteful. Additionally, you know, to say that we're in a R1 neighborhood, yes, most of our area is R1, but as we said, there are, there's a two-flat, right, literally 50 feet away from my own property. And to pretend that there'll be constant turnover is also not necessarily a foregone conclusion. The two-flat on our street was only recently rented out, it had been empty for a while, and the people who, the two families that live there have lived there now for three years. I mean, I don't, it's not really a neighborhood even of renters that would encourage turnover. So, I think that that's also not a good thing. I also think that my comments to Abby were taken out of context. You know, I know that they don't really prefer to, I think, have people nearby, they don't really come to a lot of the events that we have, and so, I can empathize, and I think that it's not the right decision for them to live near people. But honestly, this coach house is 50 feet away from their house, their neighbors, the main house is closer to that than the coach house is to them. Their own neighbor on the other side is, I'm guessing, no more than 20 feet away from them, you know, and then, the Knight's house, once again, is all the way across the alley, all the way through the yard, and acting as if this coach house somehow is, having people in it is a violation of somebody, you know, somebody's eyes is rather a little bit difficult. But anyway, thank you very much for considering this request. I do hope that this could be folded somehow into the coach house ordinance. It does seem that, you know, while I've never had, I've never brought this issue up before, because like I said, I actually intended this to be my forever home. I had very different plans for that coach house. It remained empty for many years, and then, it was in better shape than the main house, so I moved back there for a couple of years, and, but it was never my intent to sell it. A year in Michigan will just make you sick a winter, and after that, I just decided I was kind of done. So, that is why I'm selling. As for the listing, by the way, I did only learn two weeks before I was putting it on the market, that this condition needed to be lifted, and my realtor and I agreed that we would put, that it had the potential to be rented for a certain amount of money, and that is true, it does have the potential to be rented for a certain, you know, the potential. And we did actually let people know that, you know, who were seriously interested. And in fact, you know, I had an offer within the first week, a couple who decided not to go forward once they, you know, learned that there was going to be an affordability clause most likely placed on the property, because, you know, he was going to go forward with, you know, the clause of, if it can be rented, I want it, if it can't, I don't, kind of thing, you know, so I just want to clarify, because I don't want to be made out to be, you know, like, to be lying or something, but anyway, but thank you for your time, I really appreciate it, and...
Can I ask you two quick questions?
Sure.
Before you go? What's the house listed at for right now?
It's listed for $5,900, almost $600,000.
$600,000?
Yeah.
And five years ago when you bought it, would you mind telling me?
It was $300,000.
$300,000?
Yes.
Okay. That's a, that's a big change in, that's a big change in value.
Yeah, it is a big change in value, but if you would have seen it then, I think you would have understood. It was in very bad shape. It was kind of gross, to be honest with you.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, with that, we will close the record. And thoughts from the board?
It's a troubling case, to be sure, because I believe that the ordinance that the city passed allowing residencies or rentals of coach houses was passed with the intent to create more housing that was in a more affordable range throughout a variety of neighborhoods in the city of Evanston. And under that interpretation, this house would, this coach house would conform to the intent of the city, to create smaller and more affordable units throughout the city via the coach houses that might be made available. Speaking to the concerns of some of the neighbors here, I agree that many people moving into small houses and rental units in northwest Evanston in particular want to put their kids through school there, and I think that there can be some really great long-term tenants for a little apartment like that. For that reason, I would have a tendency to want to allow the residency. The issue of the affordable unit, I don't think that that's a scary proposition, and I think that it's reasonable for the city to ask for that public benefit in order to put this unit effectively on the market. That would be my thought. I think that what people would find is that, you know, a young family moving into the neighborhood is going to enrich and not hurt it. And also, it is true that the rentability of that unit will increase the market value of that property, which in turn will increase the value of the properties in the immediate vicinity. So, I would be inclined to allow the rental unit to go forward.
I agree with many of your comments, starting with the fact that this is, you know, this is a troubling case. I think I would support adding the coach house to, you know, the rental market in a way of, you know, of increasing supply in that area. That part, I'm very comfortable with. The piece that I'm struggling with is the affordable, sort of the affordability issue, and whether that clause should be attached to giving them the ability to rent. Because of this tax amendment that was just passed by the city, it seems, I'm struggling with the appropriateness of attaching that to this coach house. And again, I think to your points earlier, it's sort of like, it was attached because we can, and the city is struggling with this issue of affordability, and so, you know, at any given moment when we can address this issue, we're trying to, and I get it, that's an appropriate goal. I just don't know if it's appropriate here, given the tax amendment that the city recently put in place, that, you know, speaks to the entire rest of the population of coach houses in Evanston. I will say, on a personal note, when me and my family moved to Evanston, we lived in a coach house for a year and a half. We owned a home in another location. We could not find a single-family home that we could afford, and we stayed in that neighborhood, we stayed in that school, and we became a part of that neighborhood, we bought in that neighborhood as we, you know, as we were able to do years later. So, I really support using these coach houses to the extent that we can, and so, I definitely support having this coach house be allowed for as a rental unit. The piece that I'm still struggling with is whether to attach the affordable, sort of the affordable, the affordability clause to it. I don't know if there's some sort of compromise, if we reconsider the number of years, I don't know. That's the piece that I'm still struggling with.
I think I'd like to just respond to that issue about the affordability and the city tacking things on when they can. I think that, as I mentioned before, this particular piece of property got a variance before, and without that five-and-a-half-foot variance, there is no second floor on this. So, without that variance, this isn't an issue at all, because it doesn't, it doesn't happen. So, because they got that variance, and now we're selling it, and they're getting all this, all this commercial benefit, right, this cash benefit, the city gets something in return, and that something in return is that affordable housing. And again, we're not sticking it to them for 20 or 30 years, it's 10 years, because we know that in 10 years, the rental market will have changed, the house needs to be renovated, you know, all that, all that sort of stuff needs to happen, and so, that there is an opportunity for it to go away from affordable housing after 10 years. But I really feel very strongly that there was a benefit that this particular property got, and that the city should get a benefit in return for that. Now, that being said, right, because of the way city council passed this, this coach house rule, everybody in your neighborhood can build a coach house in their backyard right now. So, you can build a coach house, you can build a coach house, you can build a coach house. Everybody can build a coach house, just have to meet the zoning requirements of it. So, not allowing this to be a rental unit does not eliminate what you guys are afraid of and what your concerns are. Your concerns are going to happen everywhere, and I think that's one of the things that might perhaps be most misunderstood about this ordinance, is that it can happen anywhere and everywhere, and the potential is out there, and it will happen. So, I think the embracing it is a better tack to take. So, I am fully in favor of making it a rental unit again, again, because city council just changed the rules, but I do think that because you have that benefit, I think the affordable housing makes some sense, and I love that Mary did the math, because I didn't do the math, and I should have, is that that rent, that rent on that apartment pays for the taxes, and so, that's a reasonable, that's a reasonable trade-off there for a couple of years. So, that's my feeling on this.
I would agree with you, Mary, but I think that it has to go to the general rule. It is now a law in Evanston, so it is future rental property, so I would agree with that. On the affordable housing, I think that the owner will agree with that, that it's not exactly give and take, but it is a kind of, let's say, solution that should be accepted from both sides. So, I think that we can make a decision, yes for the rental and yes for the affordable 10 years.
I feel that this community is unique in that it is almost exclusively single-family, and I would vote to keep that. However, if this is going to be allowed to be a rental unit, I agree that it should be an affordable rental unit.
I would add to that, that the proviso that this can be a rental unit, provided that it is an affordable unit for 10 years, does not mean it has to be a rental unit. In terms of your marketing of the property...
Exactly.
There is a large market out there for people who are looking for home offices and studios, et cetera, so, you know, there is that possibility. No one really knows who the next owner will be.
Anecdotally, we had a guy in two weeks, a month ago, who had a very small house, who wanted to put something over his garage for his studio. So, there are a ton of people out there who are looking for that, so I think you've got opportunities.
So, to clarify that point, if the new owner used that accessory structure as a studio, does the clock start ticking, when does the clock start ticking on that 10 years?
I think it's when it transfers.
Yeah. As soon as they...
That's an excellent question that nobody knows, but I'm going to say it's when it transfers.
When the ownership transfers?
Yeah, when the ownership...
Versus our decision tonight, or when...
Yeah, I think it's when the owner, well, sorry, 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 sorry.
Shouldn't it be when we pass the...
Yes.
I apologize.
So, for example, if they wanted to use that for a studio workspace for, you know, for five years or 10 years, then that provision will have been satisfied, and they can then rent it out at market rate?
Right. That will sunset in 10 years.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, with that, we're going to go through the seven standards for a major variation. The first is, the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, property values of adjoining properties. The coach house, again, was constructed 17 years ago, and so, it's been there for a long time in this neighborhood. The neighborhood is used to the massing and the volume, and they've been living with it for a very long time, so I don't think that that will have any change in the, in their use or enjoyment or the property values of the adjacent properties, so I think that that standard has been met. Number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance, which in fact has just changed by that tax amendment that allows for the rental of all coach houses, which was approved unanimously on a consent agenda. So, you've got the full backing of every alderman in the city, so that was an overwhelming choice and a decision to make that allowable, so that standard has been met. Number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. Yeah, I don't even want to respond to that one, because I don't like what you've written.
Well, there it is, because it's a property that's unique in having that-
So, yeah, thank you. Thank you. So the property is unique in Northwest Evanston in that it has a coach house that's already built. And there are probably a handful of those in, in that sixth ward. And so it is unique from that perspective, and that it actually is already built out with a second floor and is rentable. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number four, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. Again, because of the change to the tax amendment, that was giving the ability to rent out all of these units to every other coach house. I think it's impractical, and that is a hardship, if this one does not, is not allowed to be rented out. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property. Well, it is to, to extract additional income either via rent or via the sales price of the property and the potential of the property. However, I do believe that there is a public benefit, A, by providing smaller housing in that community which doesn't have much small housing, and also by the caveat that it becomes affordable housing. I do believe that is a major benefit to this neighborhood, and that thing will get snapped up in a heartbeat. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having any interest in the property. The owner testified that she purchased the property with the coach house on it, and with that stipulation on the variance on the coach house already in place. So that standard has been met. And number seven, the requested variation requires the least deviation from the applicable regulation among the feasible options identified before the Zoning Board of Appeals. And there's no change to this building. There's no change to the outside, there's no change to the inside. It is what it is. So that is the minimum change. We are allowing them to do what everyone else is now allowed to do based on that tax amendment. So I believe that that standard has been met. So, can I have a motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion. In the matter of 2112 Ewing Avenue, case number 18ZMJV-0051, I move that we, we grant the variation to allow the coach house to be legally occupied and rented by persons who are not members of the family occupying the principal dwelling unit, and to uphold staff's recommendation that an affordable housing allowance be in place for 10 years at the property.
Can I ask, do we want to also stipulate that, that one of the units on the property must be owner-occupied? I think that that speaks to the single-family, single-family home-
Yeah.
-sense of the neighborhood.
Is that in keeping with the tax amendment that was recently passed by the City Council?
No.
I don't think so.
Well, and anyone can rent out their homes.
Yes, so I'm not sure that that's a reasonable request.
I don't think we can impose that.
The only other stipulation that I know staff made is that it not be a vacation rental. So we want to put that in, right?
Absolutely.
So we accept that as a friendly amendment?
Yes.
That vacation rentals not be allowed? All right. And that it is developed in conformance with everything-
The documents in the testimony is heard here, is presented here tonight.
And specifically for 10 years, correct? Yes. It's been moved.
Seconded.
And seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And with a vote of five to zero, you can now rent out your coach house. All right, moving on to the next one, which is 1822 Lyons. Melissa, will you read that into the record, please?
Cooper Kearns, property owner, applies for major zoning relief to establish a third dwelling unit in an existing two-family residence in the R4 General Residential District. The applicant requests a multiple-family residence on a lot width of 40 feet where a lot width of 50 feet is required, zoning code section 6855. A total lot size of 2,358 square feet where a lot size of 2,500 square feet per dwelling unit is required, zoning code section 6854. And the addition of zero parking spaces where two additional parking spaces are required, zoning code section 61635. The Zoning Board of Appeals makes a recommendation to City Council, the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record include variation applications submitted May 24th, 2018, affordable unit description, plat of survey, interior site plan of proposed unit, letter of objection, image of property, aerial view of property, zoning map of property, and dapper draft meeting minutes excerpt of May 30th, 2018.
If you can give us your name and address, and tell us a little bit about your project, please.
My name is Cooper Kearns. I'm an owner and occupant of 1822 Lyons Street. I'm looking to modify my existing basement into a third legal dwelling with the caveat of making it an affordable unit to be at 80% area median income. And the tenants would be vetted by the community partners for affordable housing, would also sign the 10-year contract to be at the set 80% area median income.
So can you tell me a little about what's going on in your basement now?
Sure. So I-
Versus the plan that I, that we have attached?
Absolutely. So I purchased the property in November of 2017, and it was an existing finished basement. So I planned to use it as a storage and laundry room for, and I do rent my upstairs unit, and I live in the first-floor unit. So I was going to use it as storage and laundry room until I talked to Melissa, and she motioned towards the notion of making it into an affordable unit. So I went ahead and submitted all the applications and variances. So that is essentially where I'm at. And I'm working right now with Eric Erickson, who is my architect. That's just the proposed plans, not the, no kind of technical specifications as of yet, pending approval. So that is the status of the finished basement.
So tell me, are all these walls existing down here in their current locations? Or are you gutting and starting over?
Gutting and starting over. Because I can't meet the ceiling height requirement, so it's going to require me to dig down about 10 inches to one foot.
That's a chunk of change.
And did I understand that you're going to put laundry rooms in each of the apartments?
So if you look at the, there's a utility room proposed, and that's actually a finished enclosed porch. And there's space right now where I use as storage where we can fit that existing laundry room and mechanicals, and also three electrical panels for each unit.
So that'll be the common laundry room for the three apartments?
Correct, yes.
Wait, sorry. You just said common laundry room.
It's laundry and mechanicals room.
But I thought every unit got their own washer and dryer?
Negative. This is, the laundry is to be free for each unit.
I swear it's in there somewhere.
It was, it was in there that there would be-
Washer and dryer in each unit.
You know, I'm almost more comfortable in a three-unit building with a common laundry room, quite frankly.
With the issues of having three separate sets of washer and dryers, just from my experience, is managing a few other properties, it's just going to, it's just going to have leaks and present problems later on, in my opinion, so.
So, so the space is finished now, but the ceiling height is what?
Right now, the ceiling height is six foot eight inches. I need to be at seven foot six inches.
Right for habitable.
Yep.
Right. Okay. And I'm sure you guys will have to comply with, with building code, but you're going to have to have egress windows in those front bedrooms, right?
Correct.
So then you're going to have area wells?
Yes. If, whatever the building department's requirements, I'm in full compliance.
Prepare for that.
And do you intend to remain living on-site? Will you, or do you expect over time that you will rent all three units?
I, I expect to remain living there for quite some time. Maybe later on, if there's a hardship in which I need to leave, then I would, then I would rent all three units out.
And do you own and rent out other units in Evanston?
I do not, not yet.
Do you own and rent out units anywhere else?
I do not. I manage condo associations in Chicago, so I have some experience with managing of properties.
So is this the first property you've owned?
Correct.
Sir, what's the current state of parking on the property?
So there is just street parking. Obviously, this is probably the biggest variable. So with that being said, every, every morning, I leave and I come back around 7:00 PM, and there's parking on Lyons. If I don't have parking on Lyons, I can park right on Darrell. So it hasn't been an issue for me to find parking.
So that surprises me. Because I will tell you that-
Sorry, sorry to cut you off. Other than the church being in session on the street?
No, no, almost, almost anytime, parking is a major issue on Darrell, on Lyons, on Church Street, on Dodge. You know, I drove by there today and had to wait to get by because there were cars parked on both sides of the street. And it's, as you know, Lyons is pretty narrow. And there was a truck, you know, offloading something. And so there was, but, but I would say that the parking is an issue. And I don't know if we can just get beyond that for the sake of the affordable unit, because we're, we're of course always happy to get an affordable unit. But there is no question that, that adding density and more cars to that neighborhood is not good.
And I agree that the parking on Lyons is always crazy. I live on Darrell, and I will honestly tell you that-
So no parking response.
-it's hard to park even in front of my house, because we have a building next to us where they just take all the parking. Is there any way to have parking in the back of your place? No way at all?
No way at all.
Just asking.
You are landlocked.
I am landlocked.
You are landlocked. It's one of the few. I think there's about 10 that are landlocked in Evanston.
Is there any way that the church would extend parking for those days that they are not holding services?
I'm not really aware, but I could potentially work with them, so.
Do you know, Violetta, like-
Yeah, it's a really small parking lot. When they have service, they are all the way up to Church Street, on both sides. And there's not parking on both sides of Darrell there.
And how many days, how many services are there per week?
They do a Wednesday night, they do a Saturday something, and they do a something on Sunday that lasts until like 3:00 or whatever. Right.
Well, and typically, the churches don't, don't share their parking spaces for fear of losing tax-exempt status.
Right. Also, as well.
Yeah.
So they don't usually share. They might give it to you, but not rent it to you.
And it's a two-flat net right now, right?
Correct.
Okay. So we're talking about adding one dwelling unit that has one, that has two bedrooms in it?
That is correct.
So theoretically, has one car.
You noted in here that the starting price of the rent following renovations would be $1,200 per month?
Correct.
Versus what, which you state is below the 80% of area median income?
Mm-hmm.
So the $1,200, you believe, is sort of the market rent for that area that happens to be below AMI?
Absolutely. If I was to be in, within that neighborhood, and $1,500, I don't think it's feasible to actually have tenants that would rent that space for that price point.
Okay. What's the rent going for the second-floor unit?
Right now, it's $1,250. I originally listed at $1,350, but I needed to get someone in right after the mortgage, so I met his demands at $1,250.
Strong negotiator.
Yeah.
That tenant.
I will honestly say, this neighborhood probably has more than its share of affordable.
Yeah.
It's just a lower-income neighborhood.
But while it's, while it's conditioned as an affordable unit, the market rent is below that affordable threshold?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
Any other questions from anyone? Nope. Okay.
Could we, I don't know if, if there's ever consideration of conditioning the occupancy of a third unit with only one car? I don't know. Is that ever considered?
That's incredibly difficult to police.
Okay.
Right, it's hard to enforce.
Can imagine. Okay. All right, I think you've got some neighbors here who'd like to speak.
Okay.
So, Mr. Sutton? You've waited patiently?
All of a sudden, 1821 Darrell, residents of the neighborhood for 68 years. It's encouraging to know that this is an owner-occupied residence, and that's as far as I can go. There is a basement apartment to the west of this unit that's currently being used. But we have three Evanston affordable buildings within this 500 radius already. One is very problematic. We have another four flat that is rented out to basically people from an absentee landlord that is problematic. Parking is the nightmare. I have a driveway, and I've come home many nights, and people have parked in my driveway or blocking it. And with the property taxes I'm paying, I am livid. I'll just be very honest with you. Did not want a call to have the cars towed because of the, well, first, the city took the sign down. There was a sign there for years saying, "No parking within eight foot of a driveway." Then they removed it. And then they just, the neighborhood just took that as a parking space with no regard to egress or exgress from my own unit. So that's been a serious problem. Also, the crowdedness of Lyons Street cannot in any way be explained. Fire truck couldn't get there barely the other day. They had to back up. It's very, very, very difficult. So with those concerns, I'm glad that at least the unit is owner-occupied, and I hope that they've remedied the problem, that the access to the second-floor unit had to be through the first-floor apartment, which was very, I thought, very inconvenient to the people who live there. And there's no backyard. It's just very, very tight. The rent is a market value, but we try to keep rent in our block substantially below market value, because we're very, very concerned of gentrification. There's one house in the next block that's already being listed for $300,000. Our taxes have doubled. For us elderly people who have been in the community, we're now living on the edge. We don't want to have to sell and move out. And we're encouraged to see young people moving in. But we would try to get them at least to adapt to their first home with all the limitations that would be required with that first home. Get some equity at it, and do like every other family, and either improve it at that point or move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Is there anyone here else here to talk about this? You get, you get a chance again, don't worry.
I'm just listening.
You're just listening? Okay.
This is fascinating.
All right, then. There'll be, there'll be openings on the board in about a year. Feel free to apply. Come on up. Feel free to answer, or rebut, or make any statements, or closing statements.
It's just one statement, or I should say rebut, on the parking situation. I believe that the parking situation, after living there for around seven months, is a combination of residents from Emerson, that live, tenants and residents on Emerson Street that live on there, that park because there's no permit parking on Lyons, which they, we, me and my next-door neighbor, Carlos, we took account of tally of, where we believe, and there was four to six cars on Lyons Street itself that belonged to residents on Emerson Street because of the limitations of parking on that street itself. That is all.
So then your next step is to talk to your alderman and try and get Lyons to be permit parked?
Potentially. I don't know.
Just saying. All right. With that, we are going to go ahead and close the record. Thoughts?
Okay, I'm going to start by saying that everybody that lives over there knows that there's been a real cleanup of the drug activity right on that block. And that is most of those cars over there. And they are there all day and all night. It's very dark over there on Lyons. Very dark. I will not go down that street after dark because the parking, and because there are people standing in the street, just- people standing in the street, just standing there like that. Permit parking is hard to come by. It's a low-income community, and every time you go to the alderman and ask for some relief, they say, is everybody on your block prepared to pay for that? And that's just another expense of the people over there. So those are my thoughts of it.
Violetta, can you clarify? You said that the drug problem has been cleaned up, and yet you say the parking, or the cars that are there are related to the drug-
It's not open like it was. I would say that it was an open drug market, maybe like a year ago, and so we've had more increased police presence, but there's still a lot of cars and there's a lot of traffic at night, right there.
So you're saying the traffic is from people coming to buy and then head out of town?
I don't know where they, what they're doing, but they're over there, and it's, it's more in, after dark than it is during the day, and during the day, it's packed, and there's a lot of kids.
There's a lot of kids on the block.
A lot of kids.
Okay.
Notwithstanding the, some of the social problems that we have experienced in that neighborhood, I am really happy to see an owner-occupied, as Carlos says, that's everything. You know, hands-on management of buildings is, is key to there being viable, good buildings in the neighborhood. I really hate to add, to add more density without any parking, but clearly you have no choice, you have no recourse. It's an affordable unit, and hopefully you can rent to somebody who avails themselves of public transportation and local amenities, and so with that, I would, I would back your expansion and improvement of your building.
Yeah, I, I support, I support Muffy's comments. If I understood, there was the expectation that the owner would continue to live there, I don't know, and that clearly is something that's desired by the neighborhood and we think is, is a positive piece of this proposal. Is that it? I'm just asking. I'm just asking.
I just asked that question of Scott, too, and since this is just a recommendation to City Council because it's a parking issue, we can throw it in there and let them deal with it. But I think, I think it's an interesting proposition, because as Mr. Sutton said, you've got fewer problems when there is an owner-occupied, because they can maintain, manage, and know what's going on. So I think that there's a real benefit to that, and in exchange for the benefit of getting that third unit, which seems to be more the benefit, that then the city gets sort of a, a, an owner-occupied unit, which I think will help the neighborhood as well. So I'm, I'm all for throwing that in there and see if it'll stick with City Council.
Because that is key. I mean, to have stakeholders-
Yeah.
-who live in the neighborhood-
Yeah.
-who are not living out.
To have stakeholders who are living in the neighborhood, not living outside of the neighborhood, you know?
People who care about the property.
Yeah.
And what happens to it.
Who are part of the community.
Care about their neighbors, have communications with their neighbors. I mean, I love that you're talking to your neighbors and stuff, so. How about you, Carol?
I'm in support of the project, definitely. Whatever we can do, though, to resolve some of these issues that were mentioned here, we may suggest certain things to the City Council, whether it will be the permitted parking or anything else. It's, it's not bad to, to put some initiatives here so that we have a better city. So whatever we can do, I'd support it. Just a note, I am really pushing you for a better plan on this unit. So you cannot have a good, affordable unit with this plan. So think it over once again, have your architect work with you, whether it's two-bedroom or one-bedroom, whether it will have a better living space, but you have to make it really nice if you want to, to have people living over there. Eighty-four square feet of a room in this outline, it's claustrophobic. You, you cannot put somebody to live in such a room, and you don't actually have a living space. Anyway, this is not a matter of the zoning board, but I want people to, to live comfortably, so.
Carol, can you clarify to your comment? So you, you believe that this space could be used appropriately as a living space, but just not is designed in its current?
Well, I accept this as a starter of design, but it, it needs more care, and if you want to deepen it, it's another really serious thing, so you have to have a really nice project, both architectural and structural. Once again, not our issue, just an advice.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna second that vote from Carol. That living room, I don't know how you're gonna furnish that. That's neither, that's neither here nor there. It's just our, our helpful two cents, if you want to take it for that. So I, I agree with all that's been said. I like the idea of, of, again, some, some more affordable housing in the neighborhood. I like that it is owner-occupied. We are, it is a unique piece of property that doesn't have some house, some, some parking on it and doesn't have the ability to get any parking on it. How much is a, a parking pass? Because you're, you're talking like it's hundreds of dollars, and it's-
No, it's not like it's hundreds of dollars, but they say every six months we've gotta pay a certain amount of money to the city to maintain permit parking.
Okay.
You know, but everybody on the street had to agree to it. On Darrell now, why we don't have it is because everybody doesn't agree.
But isn't it just the owners? Right? So if everybody's a tenant, it's just the owners of the properties that have to agree to it? Is that right?
But you, that's who has to pay for it, so everybody has to agree for it, right? The cost is shared with everybody on the block.
Interesting.
Which is why it's always failed over there.
Okay.
And for my two cents, I'm, I'm glad to see the building occupied. It's better occupied in that neighborhood than vacant, and I'd love the fact that you're going to be there. So I agree with you being able to develop this and make it as affordable as you can for yourself.
Mary Beth? If we condition our recommendation to City Council about the owner occupancy issue, should we set that in line with the length of time that the affordable unit is-
Yes.
-put in place?
Yeah.
So, I think, does that make sense?
Yes. I think it does. I, I don't know that it is realistic to ask a young couple to stay in an apartment for 10 years. They might want to have children. I mean, you know, I'm just, I, I don't think that that's a real feasible option. I think that we can ask that it remain owner-occupied for maybe a period of, I don't, I just, I just don't really know how you, how you, I, I don't think that that's a feasible thing to do. There, there are, there are ways to-
Because I would be traumatized if they moved out like in a year, right?
Right, but there are ways to enforce, there are ways to enforce property standards-
Yeah.
-with, you know, we'll know where to find them even if they move. So there will be an owner of record. We prefer that there be an owner-occupied unit, but I don't think that you can make that a condition of-
I, I'd still like to throw it to City Council and let them see them wrestle with it.
Okay.
And I agree, because as long as it's owner-occupied, that's how we keep the drug problem down. It's the buildings on Lyons that are, the owner does not live there, where we have the most problems. We have a hard time contacting the owners, we have a hard time shutting, you know, getting those tenants out that are non-productive for the community, so after the community fights that a couple of times, we just really like to be able to have the owner there to share the burden of what's going on.
Right. So I say we let City Council try and be creative, okay? How about that? Kick that one down the road. Okay, so we're gonna go through, what are we doing here?
Standards.
Standards. We're doing standards for our major variation. Number one, the request of variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, or property values of adjoining properties. I don't, I think that standard has been met, because as we've discussed, having an owner-occupied unit will certainly be a benefit. I think that the, there's, the building is already a two-flat, and so what we're talking about is making the, the basement occupiable, and I don't think that that will have any effect on the neighborhood, on the, on the neighbors per se, because we're not adding any bulk or volume or any other change to the outside of the building. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance, and the intent of the zoning ordinance is certainly to allow for the, what? Allow for the, oh, yai, 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 sorry, I'm on the wrong one. Yep. Oh, sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Is to allow for zoning relief when a public benefit, such as the affordable housing unit, is provided. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. This is a weird one, because there aren't very many properties in Evanston that are completely landlocked and do not have access to either an alley or have a driveway off the street, or have any land to have that driveway. So I do believe that that is unique to Evanston, so I believe that that standard has been met. Number four, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. Without this requested zoning relief, the property can only feature a two-family residence, which would not fully utilize the potential of the building and provide the public benefit of an affordable housing unit. So I believe that that standard has been met. Number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property, but there is a public benefit. As we've discussed clearly, rent, additional rent from an additional unit is a financial benefit, but the city is getting a benefit also of having that affordable, that affordable unit in the neighborhood, and as one of the neighbors testified, that keeping the rents at a lower rate in the neighborhood is going to be helpful to everyone, including the people who own their homes. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. The owner's purchased this last fall, and the plat, the, the lot was platted, and the house was built long before he purchased the property, so I do believe that that standard has been met. Number seven, the request of variation requires the least deviation from the applicable regulation among the feasible options identified before the Zoning Board of Appeals. Again, we're not talking about adding anything to the size of the building, to any bulk of the building, so I do believe that that is the minimum change necessary. So with that, do we have a motion for recommendation to City Council?
Okay. In the matter of 1822 Lyons Street zoning, case 18ZMJV-0047, I motion that we make a positive recommendation to City Council to establish a third dwelling unit in the existing two-family residence of 1822 Lyons, with the condition that the additional dwelling unit be affordable as proposed and that it be owner-occupied for the length of the affordable housing clause? Okay.
Do we want to have any language in there about the, the parking?
I don't know what we could do about it.
We're asking, we're- We're just recommending that they approve the third unit. If they do, they know they're approving it without-
Without the parking.
The parking.
Oh, are you asking about the, the permitting?
Yes.
Yeah. If you want to ask them to permit, to City Council to permit the street, I don't know-
Okay, and recommend the City Council allow that this street be permit parking? Okay.
Or just consider the expiration of permit parking for the street, given, you know, current parking conditions on this and immediate adjacent streets?
Yes.
It's been moved. Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. With a vote of five to zero, you go to City Council with a positive recommendation. Good luck with your project there.
Yes.
All right. We have accomplished quite a bit tonight, and so who wants-
I'd like to make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and with that, we are adjourned.